Good morning. We're going to call today's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'm gonna ask everybody to stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that for the record, there's a copy of the Open Meeting Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers if anybody wants that. For health reasons, there is an automatic deplibulator in the back of the room in case anybody needs that. And I will ask that if you have any cell phones to please silence them or turn them off. And with that, we will call to order the Board of Equalization Committee. Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgerson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 26, 2019. No, February 5, 2019. And item B is a call for meeting as set Tuesday, February 26, 2019, as a date for hearing or certifier assessment and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
Most approved.
Most approved by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? On Board of Equalization-related matters?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I just had my meeting with the appraiser, and I got a few comments about the process. First of all, I did my own drive-by appraisals of what they say are comparable properties. And in the Dundee area, many houses are bigger, few are smaller, wide range of prices. They even have a satellite that can look, but I question whether the measurements they do by satellite are correct. Because you can't measure the inside living space, for one thing. For another, can we afford to have appraisers go out and measure every property and all of the living space in every property in Omaha? No, we can't. Second of all, a lady friend of mine got hers recently. Hers went up $33,000, as did mine, and I just got my adjudication a couple months ago at $192, and they jumped it to, well, $33,000 more. That's about eighteen, almost 18 percent. There's something wrong with the process. Drive-by appraisals don't really work. And it needs to be looked at carefully, but this lady, hers was jumped that much, but she has a neighbor that has a much larger house, two-story house, that's been completely remodeled, it's valued much less than hers is. So who's gonna go knock on that person's door and go in and measure their living space and make sure the square footage that you're basing it on is correct? Because there's a lot of inaccuracies. And an awful lot of people are getting bumped up way beyond their means, and that's not necessarily our fault. It might be the fault of a lot of programs that are being, tax dollars are being spent on. My final comment on that is, I would like to know why the Learning Council is being disbanded and where the tax dollars that went to the Learning Community Councils are going. Because the World Herald isn't reporting on that. But that affects my property taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. Item D, E, and F, a routine. Mr. Goodwilly, there's not anything to add on D and F. Is there a motion to approve items D, E, and F on the Board of Equalization?
Motion to approve D through F and adjourned.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft.
Mr. Chair.
I had a question about, there was a Methodist church, I think, that got denied, and I wasn't really sure. I guess it was kind of a funny reason, an odd reason. Maybe it's... Is Mr. Kavanaugh still here? Yes.
There he is.
Come on down. If it's based in law, that's fine, but it kind of says, the... Oh, here we go. It says, "This was denied for the following reasoning. United Methodist Ministries bought the trailer on November 26, 2018, and we received a form, 457, on February 7th, whatever." And it says, "We only allow 30 days from the purchase date." Is that based in state law?
It's based in state law. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, it's, we're following the law here. It's not something we feel about whether we feel like doing it or not, so...
That's fine. I just, I was a little bit puzzled by the language, though. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There is a motion, a second, to approve D and F and adjourned. Please vote.
Mr. Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgerson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 15, 2019. What's the will of the Board?
Approved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
This is on the Board of Corrections.
Yeah.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item two is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that want to comment on Board of Corrections-related items not listed on the agenda? Seeing none. Item three is a report from Director. Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Michael Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you my report for the month of January. We continue to be over budget. I have talked with Joe Lorenz, and we will be making the adjustment to our budgets before I come before you again in March to get the adjustments that were required as a result of contractual changes and other matters. On a positive budgetary note, we are tracking ahead of projected revenues for this point in the fiscal year. Enclosure number two, community corrections. 16 individuals were housed in what we call the sanctioned center for a total of 106 beddays. Nine individuals were housed in the transitional discharge center for a total of 57 beddays. These are measures we've taken recently to try to decrease the population in the secure jail by moving some selected folks who traditionally hadn't been in community corrections over to the Criminal Justice Center, housed in the work release facility. Not huge numbers yet, but we hope to be able to grow those over the coming months. We have had several individuals complete their GEDs recently, and so we are scheduling our second-ever GED graduation ceremony. We'll make sure that you guys get email invites, but it is scheduled for March 8th, right here in this room at 10:00 a.m. Reentry Services is continuing to develop the therapeutic community concept and designated housing units in the facility. We're modeling that after our, what we've been able to accomplish with our veterans' program. A recovery community for those with addictions is currently being rounded out with additional services. And a youthful offenders' community is probably next on deck for us to develop programs around offenders in our younger demographic. Also of note, Commissioner Borgerson has organized a group of people who are focusing on the specific needs and services for women who are incarcerated as well. 24/7 sobriety had 46 admissions. There were 3,174 breath tests that were completed. 13 were positive for alcohol use, and there were six no-shows. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.5 percent. There were 840 individuals monitored for 803 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were no violations of any type during January, so the compliance rate was 100 percent. There were 427 saliva drug tests administered with 13 positives and 14 no-shows. 13 drug-testing patches were submitted for testing, and there were zero violations. Work release admitted 28 individuals in January. That was a little bit of a decrease from December. On the other hand, house arrest admitted 90 individuals. That was an increase from the previous month. 34 individuals were admitted to the reentry assistance program, and we did have a GED graduate. In the jail, in corrections programs, 62 individuals were admitted to those programs in the jail, and we did have a GED graduate there as well. A new service from the mindfulness outreach initiative began services in January to both men and women in the jail, and that is being delivered at no cost to the county. 36 individuals from pretrial services were referred for priority prosecution, and 405 beddays were saved. 375 individuals were placed on pretrial release, and in total, over the course of the month of January, 1,226 individuals were monitored on pretrial release with a 93 percent compliance rate. Enclosure number three, compliance. Our second-year data collection for our audit cycles is underway, and we will have our second-ever Prison Rape Elimination Act, or PRIA, audit coming up in January. Enclosure number four, personnel. Interviews are ongoing for new correctional officers. We hope to have a sizable class seated by early March, looking at probably March 11th as the target date to have a class of at least 20, perhaps up as many as 25 correctional Brian Mulvaney was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant in January, and Scott Risto was promoted to the rank of Sergeant. Lieutenant Matt Wheeler and Sergeant Rita Walker both retired in January. Promotional testing dates for 2019 Sergeant and Lieutenant tests have been scheduled. The Sergeant test, I believe, is a week from Thursday. And we've recently launched a new staff development and mentoring program that will initially focus on the first year of a correctional officer's employment. During the first year, our new officers will be matched with experienced officers who will meet with them a couple of times each week. They will also meet with their Sergeant weekly and a Lieutenant monthly to attempt to improve the quality of their execution of their duties as new officers, but also to improve our staff retention rate as well. We did struggle last year with new officers. We had quite a few of them that didn't make it through that first year, so we're trying to respond to that and in a way that supports them and brings their skill level forward. Enclosure number five, our population report. We had 1,747 admissions. That's a little bit of an increase from the previous month. We released 1,716, also an increase. Our high count was 1,332. Our low count was 1,263. Our average population was 1,298, so just as an average for that in January, being just a hair under 1,300 is quite high for us for this time of year. There are 372 custodial bed, excuse me, custodial sanctioned beddays. The marshal population and ICE populations remained constant. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population remained stable, and the female population remained stable. And depending upon the day, there were three to four female housing units open during the month. Turning to enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,340 intake screenings and 423 physical and health assessments. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There's 127 initial psychiatric assessments, 145 initial mental health assessments, 58 mental health infirmary placements. There were five individuals referred to the Board of Mental Health and two that referred to long-term psychiatric facilities. And finally, other noteworthy items. Although this technically became official in February, I did want to make a note of Amber Redmond, who was selected to be my deputy director. I've been very impressed for a long time with Amber, but especially since she took over as the interim director in August. Her poise, leadership, and judgment has been second to none, in my opinion, and I'm very comfortable working hand-in-hand with her moving forward. We have other leadership positions, including Amber's former position and my former position, which will be filled in the upcoming month or so, and then some other positions that may need to be filled as a result of those actions over the course of the spring. Construction continues on the first two housing units in Phase Two of the Public Safety Bond project. As I've mentioned before, this project is a little more complex. There's been a little bit more of a learning curve to deal with the original construction of the jail, but those barriers are being met and overcome. We should be getting the first housing unit back, turned back over to us as a completed project by the end of the month, so we are, still remain on target to finish this project on time. We've also had a series of meetings with security staff from throughout the ranks to develop more, new and more thorough plans to conduct routine and nonroutine searches throughout the department. It's one of my goals to get very much back to the basics in terms of a safe and secure environment, and we want to focus on that with our staff and our leadership from our newest officer up to our most senior personnel. We'll continue those efforts and expand those efforts as we move forward. Any questions?
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you for that. On number four, which is the personnel report, you indicated that we're taking some steps regarding staff retention, I think?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay. Just to give us kind of a benchmark, I guess, now that we've got a complete 2018 under our belt, and we had a number of classes in 2018, where did we end up in terms of, you know, we're putting new people on staff and people are moving off of staff? What was that?
So there's two ways that I look at that. The overall number, we hired 104 individuals in 2018, 104 new officers. Throughout all ranks, including retirements and people, you know, doing career changes and so forth, there were 89 that departed. That number is less concerning to me than the subset that, of our 104 new officers, we had 47 that did not stay for an entire year.
Did not stay for what, I'm talking?
Their employment did not last for a year. Over the course of 2018, there were 47 officers who left within their first 12 months. Some of those were our decisions because we discovered that it wasn't the right fit. Some of it were their decisions where they discovered it wasn't the right fit. Either way, in both of those pools of people, I think we can make progress and do better by a lot more outreach and support, familiarity among the staff at all ranks with the people coming through our new training classes. When we seat this class in March, it'll be my expectation that individuals from all ranks visit those classrooms, get to know those young officers so that they feel that they are a part of a group and supported during those critical first months, that they can go get questions answered instead of perhaps making a mistake because they weren't sure what to do and they didn't know who to ask. So we're gonna try and overcome some of those dynamics and improve on that, you know, that retention number for those first-year officers.
Very good. So if I figure this right, we hired 104, and for various reasons, we lost 89. That's a net gain of 15. And those would be 15 correction officer one positions, basically?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Now, the other side of this is, and you probably saw this morning's paper on the front page in terms of what the state is struggling with in their correction system, mandatory overtime. We have had similar challenges. So in 2018, were you able to categorize what the mandatory overtime was and whether or not that's going up, down, or staying the same?
It is still, it remains a challenging issue for us. I'm gonna see if I can find it in here. Amber, if you know what page to find that on, feel free to come down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it in here?
Well, I know we track... Let me see here. We report out on our overtime in the report that Amber produces for me.
It's on page 13.
So that's a chart of the overall hours, and you can see we made minor progress with how I would say that by the...
Oh, I see. So I guess if we go back to, you know, essentially a year ago, if I'm reading this graph correctly, it has like a 3,500 number?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
What does that mean?
That's how many hours of overtime in a month.
3,500 hours in January of 18. And if you go forward, there's some ups and downs, but if you come to today, it's just shy of 3,500. Is that right?
The trend line is slightly down over the course of the year, but we've, as you can expect with a net gain of 15 officers and with the additional staff that we require for the construction project, because we do have to have a couple of extra security escorts in that area...
Right.
We haven't made a ton of progress yet.
Okay.
But that's why it's so important to keep these new officers in place. We don't really have a hiring problem. If we hire 104 people, we should be able to maintain our staffing. We didn't, and we need to do better.
Good. The article in this morning's paper regarding the state system and their problem indicated some steps that they might be taking to impact on their mandatory overtime situation. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot here or anything, but do we have a plan in place to maybe impact on that number, which seems to be a little static?
Basically, the plan is better staff retention of our new officers. We need to be able to fill our posts each day with staff who are on the schedule to be there and not rely on having to order people from the previous shift. We just certainly, simply haven't had the numbers of staff to be able to do that consistently, which is what's driving the overtime. So if we can do a better job of staff development and retention, if we can have a couple of good classes and not lose very many people in the meantime, we should be able by midsummer to really see these numbers impacted in a positive way.
Good. So of the new hires in 18, 104, 47 did not stay a year. Is that a probationary period that year?
Correct. Correct. That is probationary.
Which is, you know, just under 50 percent attrition rate, fairly high. Do we do anything like, you know, exit interviews or, you know, why are you leaving? I mean, I understand that some of them were let go.
Correct.
But is there some way that we can talk to these folks about why that attrition rate is so high?
Yes. I believe Human Resources sends a survey to them. We are also actually in the process of doing a couple of different surveys of our current staff to attempt to ascertain what's important to them, what changes that we could make that would make, granted, you know, and I acknowledge the struggles they've had with the overtime and how that impacts their personal lives, but what can we do today to make life a little more tolerable? And I think the staff, the feedback that I've gotten is they appreciate those efforts and just the understanding and acknowledgement that we know that you've been in a tough boat for a while.
And this March class that you mentioned, that's the next class of new people we have coming?
Correct.
What's the size of that class?
We are still completing, we're gonna continue to interview until the end of this week. It's my hope that that class will end up being somewhere between 20 and 25. We probably, to fully fill out our staffing, we need a few more than that, but I'm concerned about the quality of the training that people get when the class gets too large. So I want to keep it in that 20 to 25 range. That's been a class size we have done before, and I want to, hopefully, the goal is, is we will continue the interviewing processes to follow on right behind that and do another class of about that size that would probably start late May, I believe, if you count out how long it takes us to get people through a class, so that when they're off, you fast-forward to around the 1st of July, we have two more classes on the floor, and we hopefully are in a much better space going forward. It's also my intent, moving forward, to have new hire training classes just scheduled and on the calendar so that we never get into this situation again. We will, the variation will be the size of the classes, not whether we're gonna have them or not. If we come to a point in time where we get to where we absolutely don't need to hire a class, we can cancel that quarter's class, but we're gonna, my plan is to have a quarterly new hire class moving, once we get up to our staffing levels, to have a quarterly class moving forward.
Great. Thank you. And congratulations to Ms. Redmond on her new position. We have high hopes for you. Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, I just want to thank you and your team for the good job. You certainly are here, and you came on the job after some tough shoes to fill...
Thank you.
...with Mark Foxall, but you've done a great job of listening and doing your best, and I think the appointment of Amber is outstanding. Her commitment to doing the right thing and the respect that all of you people try to show is really something we feel privileged to have you all down there doing the job you do. So thank you very much for your work, and congratulations to Amber, and just keep it going.
Will do.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you very much. Mike, I've got some questions about, we've got that medical contract coming up a little bit later on the consent agenda, and I guess we're paying them by the pound from the size of the contract, but anyway, I tried reading it, and I know that I'm a legal scholar, just don't ask the law school, but anyway, I'm a legal scholar, and it was difficult reading, and I probably have some questions for our legal counsel, just general questions, but one of the concerns that I have, and it's something I've said for quite a few years, there are some places where there are three primary places, operations that the county has, that we have a really high responsibility for the care of people. One is the Douglas County Health Center, another is the Douglas County Youth Center, and another is the Douglas County Correction Facility. And we have a high responsibility to the folks who are inside those facilities because they don't have a lot of options. If someone is ill at the youth center, I don't think they can call in a private physician. I don't really know the procedures. I doubt it. Many times, they're not financially able to do so. So the duty that we have is really, really, almost rises to a biblical responsibility. I mean, it is so serious. And that's one of the concerns that I have just in general about how people are treated because, and particularly in locked-up situations, sometimes, sometimes people don't buy in to respect. And I want to make sure that our health, and I know that the facility and our employees are tuned in, they respect people. That's been the success, really at the heart of the success of the facility that you and Amber are running. So I really want to make sure that we have any contractors who are involved, that they are grounded in the fact that the people who are in that facility are owed... are owed respect and must be treated as really our charges, and that they have no options. And so, I know that, you know, if I could give a pep talk to the people who are there, and I might just do that anyway, that would be my message. So, I know you know that, I know you believe it, but I just want to say it. I'm interested in the, at some time, getting, as I see these numbers coming up, and you did mention this time of year, they're relatively high. I'd like to know if it's possible for you to, or you might already have it, the cost per day, per person, and that would include the new medical contract and all the other services, if you possibly can. In my opinion, I think county government, and I can only speak really for Douglas County and sharing the chairmanship with Commissioner Morgan and the Finance Committee, I think we're reaching a breaking point. We are crossing into territory that cannot be sustained. I've watched the cost of our services climb dramatically. And that's through no fault of any director or elected official. It's a fact of life, the demands on us for services. And so, I really think we need to start, we are gonna start talking, I think in finance, I talked to Commissioner Morgan about it, about what we do about some of these services. Because we are, we are a totally operative of the state. We do only what the state tells us to do. A couple senators laughed when I told them the only authority we have is to regulate jake braking. I think we might have one other, but I'm not sure. But we have no other authority other than telling truck drivers they can't use their transmissions to slow down their vehicles. Is that right?
We don't have the authority.
And believe me, the farmer and the dell over there would know that. I appreciate that, Claire. But seriously, so we have a lot of restrictions, and we don't have. And I spoke to the governor at a reception, I think I mentioned that, and I told him I'd like to speak to someone, and Commissioner Morgan's gonna go down with me, to speak to his chief of staff about what we can work, do to work together. Because this constant, you need to cut your spending stuff, just doesn't sell. You need to quit telling us to do things, you know, that's got some more relevance to me. But in any event, we'll work, continue to work together on it. But it is alarming, alarming to me, and I know it is to you as well. I wanted to ask about, let's see, the testing exam. Sometimes, this is where we get into trouble sometimes with persons who are, who take the exam and something they think doesn't go right, and so we get sued, or there are questions about it. And I don't know who we're using to administer the test, if we're doing it ourselves, and who's writing the questions, and whether they're relevant. There's also some question of, sometimes of biases that are in the questions. Sometimes even questions that are difficult if a person is of another race and heritage. So, I want to encourage you to make sure that, and I know you will, that we're on target to make sure that all the people who are taking the test are being treated fairly, and that the end result will be one that is meaningful and hopefully is not challenged. But sometimes we can't avoid those things, and I know that. And there's a question in here somewhere, okay. I did want to ask you, one other thing that I'm concerned about is that we have some injuries over there sometimes that don't really make it too publicly. We don't want to necessarily mention the names of who they are. But I know there was quite a serious incident just a few weeks ago. And the purpose of bringing those up is to let the employees over there know that we care about what's happening to them, and we're aware of it, and we know that they've got tough jobs, that's part of the deal. And I'll try to find a question in here, let's see, where is it here? Maybe that's, maybe that's all there is. But I do want to come through on the twenty-sixth, if we could, try to put that in our calendars, twenty-sixth of February, to come through the facility, look at the construction. We never, I haven't for myself really kept up on that too well. But I think we ought to try to do that on the twenty-sixth. So, let's see, can I ask you a question? Let's see, how'd you get here today? No, I'm just, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes, Mike, on page two, when we're talking about pre-trial services, you show four-hundred-and-five bed days saved. So, that's about thirteen per day. Am I interpreting that correct?
Roughly.
So, your average daily population would be up thirteen just per day, just from this. And at ninety-three or ninety-five dollars a day, that's a significant saving, so thank you. Now, when we talk about one-thousand-two-hundred-twenty-six individuals monitored on pre-trial release and a ninety-three percent compliance rate, and I do believe I've asked this before.
Sure.
But the seven percent who are non-compliant, what are we doing with them?
So, this refers to a program where people who are released, this may, this will be a condition of their bond.
That's right, thank you.
And there's a call-in system. And they have to call in once per day verifying that they're still in the area. And the seven percent who don't follow through with those phone calls on a regular basis, our obligation is to notify the courts that this person hasn't been compliant. And then, it depends on which particular court they're in as to what typically judges do in response to that. Oftentimes, they just wait to see if the person will actually show up on their court date. It's actually pretty rare that the judge will take an affirmative action to do, to take some sanction against the individual for, prior to their court date.
And if they don't call in on a Monday, and Tuesday they call in, is that compliant or non-compliant, or what?
We look for patterns. So, if they're, if they are, if they miss a day, we're probably not gonna send a notice to the court if they miss one day. But if we see a pattern of days that are missed, then we will notify the court that they're non-compliant.
And do we have any idea how many of that seven percent does not show up to the court date?
I do not have that figure. I can, I'll talk with our pre-trial staff to see if that's a figure that they can get their hands on. That would come from a different data system, not one that we run. It would come from the justice system for the courts. So, that's a system I'm less familiar with, to know whether we can pull that data out of there or not. But I'll ask the question.
Then when we go to page three on daily population and custodial sanctioned bed days, three-hundred-and-seventy-two. That's about twelve per day. That is an addition to thirteen per day from the pre-trial release, correct?
Well, except it goes in the opposite direction. The custodial sanctions are a new population that are coming to jail through the legislation, LB-605.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, that, and we can move some of those people, we can move to what we call the sanction center. So, we're trying to mitigate the impact of the custodial sanctions by moving some of them over to the work release facility.
And that's what I thought. So, they're there during the night, but not during the day?
No, they're there twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours a day, okay. Your job is so complex, the rules are so, I, we admire you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
Mike, let me ask you, go back to Commissioner Craft's question. So, this, on the pre-trial piece, can you, is the three-hundred-and-seventy-five, is that the new effort you started, that we started?
No, this is the traditional, you know, just for the call-in system.
Okay, the three-seventy-five?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is, how will you, how will you break out that new, or have you all started in there yet? Or have you had time to get there since you, that's a new job?
Yeah, right, that's a big part of it. I need, when I assemble my, the rest of my leadership team, getting back to that pre-trial effort that we started last year, so we can get a little more bang for our buck on that, I think will be a top priority for this year as well.
Okay. So, then let me go back up, 'cause I think I asked this, but I'm still. So, when you go to the twenty-four-hour sobriety program and you look at SCRAM, these are like almost a hundred percent.
Yes.
Compliance rates. So, I guess the question again, is this the judge's decision? Or do we play in this? Because it seems like if the rates are that successful, we're not taking enough risk. I mean, is there some risk you can take with some more people to see what's what?
So, there's different kinds of risk. And there may be somebody that might be a good, say they have an alcohol-related defense, which would make them a candidate for twenty-four-seven. But they also, if they also have a history of violence, or something that, you know, that would may lead the judge to leave a bond in place, so that that person remains in custody.
Okay.
But yeah, I can't argue with the fact that we have good compliance on the people who do get on the program.
So, basically, the judges are making those calls?
Twenty-four-seven in almost all cases is a condition of bond.
Okay. So, last question on page seven. The middle number, the average felony and misdemeanor jail populations. So, I just want to make sure I couldn't tell on this. The, let's go this year in January, the one, the top numbers, the one-forty-nine, are those pre-trial felonies or misdemeanors? Is the eight-forty-nine pre-trial misdemeanors?
Those are misdemeanors, yes. And you know what, I'll talk with the person who does this graph, because those colors are awfully close. So, I'll talk with her and see if she can make those a little more, stand out from each other a little more.
Okay. I think that's all the questions, unless you want to add anything?
I'll just comment Commissioner Boyle's concern about medical. That will remain a top priority of mine. I am currently very comfortable with the leadership team locally that our contractor has brought in. They seem very attuned to the needs and well-being of our population. They work well with our security staff, there's good lines of communication. One of the things that Amber and I took note of when we were doing interviews for lieutenant and sergeant last fall is the comments we got from those candidates about the improved relationships with our medical and mental health staff. It's my job to make sure it stays that way. And so, we will, I have some organizational changes that are upcoming that will increase the level of oversight and have some cross-sectional oversight of what happens with our medical care. You know, my two top priorities are stabilizing our staffing and assuring that we always have good medical care.
Thank you very much. That's exactly the kind of attitude I know you and your chief administrative officer have as well, your assistant. So, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there most adjourned? Most by Commissioner Boyle, is there second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We're now called to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is the minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February fifth, 2019. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, February nineteenth, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Could you remove item A? From, because I have a conflict in that we had a listing on that building where we submitted the request for proposals.
You mean B?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was going to have to consent.
Well, then we'll just take item A, approval of the minutes of the. Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item B? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle.
Abstain because of some checks to my company.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan abstains, other commissioners voting yes, motion passes.
Item two is the consent agenda. There are ten items on the consent agenda, what's the will of the board? Most by Commissioner Boyle. We can't. I'll second the motion to approve. Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, then Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Could we remove item A? As we did participate in that request for proposals, my company did, not myself, but Ryan Ellis.
Okay.
The rest of them, I'm good with.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Right, I have some questions on item A and item I. So, I believe there are parties here from the Douglas County Election Commissioner's Office relative to item A.
So, what we'll do is we'll remove item A for a separate vote because of request. So, right now, Mr. Clerk, if the motion is second or fine, we'll approve items B through J. And Commissioner Kavanaugh has questions for I.
Yeah, I have questions on I, which is the Well Path contract.
I saw Mary, Mike, or Mary, do somebody want to answer that?
Commissioners, could you, could you vote on the other items first? So, the people that are waiting could, just on the ones that are, there are no questions on, if you could vote on those first to get the people out of here that are.
He's got a question on I, so hold up.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I have a few questions on the Well Path contract, which is.
Can we vote on the other items that are on the consent agenda, only so we can clear the house?
Well, we can, then we'll have to.
If there's no controversy, there is on A and I, I'm just saying, let's vote on the others, could we? Sorry, Jim.
Mr. Clerk, will we state that motion to exclude A and I?
Yes.
Okay. With that, please vote.
I vote yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll go to item A, then approval of the lease. Mike, sit down right there, you'll be back. Item A is approval of the lease of the Douglas County Election Office at one-two-one-zero-zero and a half West Center Road. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I have some questions for, I think it's probably the election commissioner, who's the moving party on this, and.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brian, how are you?
Good, good.
As I indicated to you, I just have some general questions relative to the lease proposal that's before us. And just to, I guess, put this kind of a little bit in perspective, you're currently resident of a county-owned property on Hundred and Fifteenth Street, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And this proposal is to move from the county-owned property to, I believe it's a ten-year lease over on Hundred and Twentieth and Center, roughly.
Correct.
Okay. The property in question, and I'm looking at the floor plan for it, appears to be somewhere, I mean, just the main level in the area of about forty-five, fifty thousand square feet. And your proposal for that is to use how many square feet?
Thirteen thousand square feet on the top level, and then six thousand down in the lower level for storage, or for warehouse.
Okay. And currently, you have how many square feet at the county-owned property?
About ten thousand there. And then we do lease three thousand square foot off-site currently for warehouse space, because we don't have room at our current facility.
And this proposal is to lease this property, or part of this property, for a term of ten years, is that right?
That's correct.
And the lease amount. per month, do you have that?
Yes, yes. So, it'd be ten thousand, one oh four seventeen per month in 2019.
And there are different provisions in there that would affect the price of that lease, is that right?
I believe it's two or two and a half percent each year. But the other provision that's in there is that the build-out is included for us on that, so it's, it's basically like turnkey.
Exactly. So, if we ran that lease period over a year, do you know what the annual lease amount is? Essentially, twelve times ten thousand.
Ten, about a hundred twenty thousand, I could do the exact amount here, but roughly it looks like, you do ten thousand a month times twelve, a hundred twenty thousand.
Okay. And then if you run that over ten years, the total price of that lease, just at that base price, is what?
Would be one point two million then, ten times one twenty, correct me, but I-
No, I mean, we're just-
Yep, yep, okay.
I think that, you know, someplace between one point two, one point four is the, you know, the, the range.
Sure, sure.
The value of the structure, are you in possession of that?
I am not, I, I, from what I understood from working with Mr. Ellis is that, that, I guess, I never asked about purchasing because I was, understood that it wasn't for sale.
Okay. The assessed value, I mean, you never looked at the assessed value on the county's website?
I did not.
Okay. I think it currently carries an assessed value of about one point five million dollars. And that's up from an assessed value of about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in 2017. That's for the entire property, we're only talking about a portion of that property, right?
Correct.
The county will be then sharing this with who?
I don't, I, I don't want to speak for the leasing company, I don't, I'm not sure if the other portions upstairs are leased. I know downstairs in the warehouse that we would share, there are other tenants, I'm not sure who those tenants are. I've talked to them, but I, I didn't ask, we really didn't get into that. It, you know, didn't seem all that germane, I guess, to our negotiations from, from my point of view.
Right, right. In these negotiations with Mr. Ellis from the PJ Morgan Company, who represented us in those negotiations?
Mr. Leahy and myself, and then it was Ryan Ellis, and then Justin Hernandez from NGC, New Generation Construction, which will be doing the build-out. And we had several meetings at my office, Jerry and Jeff were there. They've been in constant contact, I know Jerry has, with, with Mr. Ellis and myself.
The build-out that you're talking about is to take the property and put it in a condition that would accommodate your office?
Correct.
Right. So, that contract to do that was led by the county?
No. By the owner. Yeah.
I understand.
Sure.
Okay. The lease that we have in front of us, which, you know, is, is for a layman, you know, it's, it's a lot of technical stuff.
Yes, it is, I read it, it sure is.
So did I. Does contain some increases along the way to the, to the base rent that we just spoke about. And those involve, I think, a percentage like you indicated of two and a half percent
Correct.
over time, so the actual price could be in excess of what we're talking about in, in one point four, one point five million dollar range, is that right?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'll take your word for it, I'd have to, to do the math here. But I, I, it should be noted that we started at three, we came negotiated down to, we wanted two, we went in the middle at two and a half. So, just FYI.
Right. Is there a, a square footage number in the actual lease itself?
I believe, do you know off the top of your head, Jerry? I can maybe let Mr. Leahy's-
Sure.
Go ahead. Jerry Leahy, public property. The lease amount for first floor square footage is thirteen thousand, it's seven twenty-five a square foot.
Yeah, just looking at the lease now, where do we find those numbers?
Well, let me finish. The first floor is thirteen thousand, it's seven and a quarter, seven eight fifty-four seventeen. The basement is forty-five hundred square feet, it's four fifty a square foot, twenty-two fifty monthly. Annually, if you add, if you add the ninety-four, two fifty-four oh four and the twenty-seven thousand, you should be at, I gotta get my lease here, you should be at ten thousand, one oh four seventeen. So, those are the figures.
I understand. Are those numbers in the, in the lease?
There, on page nine, there is an exhibit of the layout, which would indicate the amount, I believe.
Yeah, there's a schematic on page nine.
Correct.
But the numbers we're actually talking about, you know, that we will be renting X square feet of this facility, are, are those numbers in the, in the lease itself? If you know, I mean, if you don't know.
I, I don't, I don't think they are, but if you compute it-
I, I appreciate it.
And break it down.
I, I was looking for it, but I was wondering if I was missing something, because I didn't see the number of square feet in the actual lease.
And I think it should be noted too, I think we're going to get thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty square feet just because of the layout upstairs, they're only going to charge us for thirteen thousand square feet. So, we are getting a little bonus on that from them because of the layout of the building.
For the office space.
For the office space.
And then the six thousand for the storage space is six thousand?
But we're only being charged forty-five hundred, for forty-five hundred square feet, but we're getting six thousand square feet in that. They, they've indicated that they'd like to have us as a tenant, so we've done some negotiating and they've done some things to make it a little more attractive for us to go there.
Right.
If I may, one footnote on the storage. That's at four fifty a square foot, as we discussed. I believe right now that Brian is paying, I don't want to be out of school here, but in excess of five fifty to six for his storage right now, which will go away, so you're really swapping out for more storage at a lower price.
Right. The storage we're talking about, that's for like election machines, ballot boxes, that kind of thing, is that right?
It's for ballot boxes, it's mostly for, by federal law, we have to keep voting, all voting materials for twenty-two months before we can shred those. And so, that's mostly what it is, is our, our ballots and our sign-in books and things of that nature. And we do have a schedule, and as soon as we can get those shredded, we do, because then we have the next round
Sure.
that we have to go to.
Now, prior to our current storage system, we stored those materials on county property, is that correct?
That's right, when I first started, it was out at Fitzgerald Home, and then we had to vacate that because of the renovation.
Right, right, which is nearing completion, thank God. And so, you're consolidating, you know, your office where it is and your storage where it is, kind of under one roof, right?
Correct.
Okay. The lease contains a bunch of elements regarding HVAC and signage and access that I presume our attorneys have gone through, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We have reviewed this, is that correct?
Trece York County Attorney's Office, that is correct.
And we find that to be in standard compliance with?
We've seen similar language in other leases. We don't do that many leases, but we have done some, and so these are fairly typical paragraphs for leases.
The real, I guess, bottom line here is that for the price that we're paying and the term that we're staying, it would seem to me, and people in the community have reviewed this and have the same question, that we might be in a position to convert the lease from a straight lease to a lease purchase arrangement. I mean, the fact of the matter is, you're in county-owned property now. And heretofore, the storage was in county-owned property now, and-
No, it's not, pardon.
Heretofore, the rental of the current storage unit, the county owned the property that it was stored in. We just went over that. It was at 156th and Maple, correct? Yes or no, correct?
Years ago, years ago.
Yes, okay. So, we're moving, in my opinion, to, from own property to lease property in the wrong direction and at a price that, over the term of this lease, would meet or exceed the value of the structure that we're in. So, having looked at this and had other people look at this, the idea is, why would not we propose that the lease become a lease purchase agreement so that at the end of the term, which is a very long term for any lease or, I'm a landlord, I know terms of leases that are ten years are pretty rare, that we would have the option to purchase at a fair market value, a property that we had substantially paid for by then? Rather than, at the end of this lease, we have no such option and we have paid a million and a half dollars for a building that's assessed at about a million and a half dollars. Is that something that we could discuss?
Well, I, I've asked the question about, because you asked me the question about ownership.
Right.
And I've asked the question, the owners do not want to sell it, they want to develop. They bought it to get into business, to make, make an establishment here in Omaha. And it's an investment for them, and it's a simple, would you sell it to Douglas County? No, not at this time. We have no interest to sell the property, we just bought it and are developing now. So, I did ask the question, but it's just not available.
Right, I, I guess this is a little different than would you sell it now, this is a, would we amend this into a lease purchase agreement rather than a lease agreement? So that at the end of the ten-year span of this, we would have the option to buy at that point? That's the question.
I, I did not pose that question, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's available for that purpose.
I appreciate it, I mean, it's, we're just talking about whether or not we've asked the, the questions. Have we talked about a term of lease that is less than the ten-year term that we're engaging in here?
You know, initially, we talked about a five-year lease, but the price was much different. And, you know, there's a build-out in any of these leases. And there, there's a way to recapture that build-out, and it's through negotiations, and it's through the lease payments, depending on the term. So, for example, if we did a five-year lease, we may be paying nine fifty a square foot. So, to stretch it out, I'm pretty certain we're going to be there ten years.
I, I appreciate that. I guess, you know, my feeling on this would be, if we're moving from county-owned property to county-leased property, we're generally moving in the wrong direction because we're increasing the cost to the taxpayers. And if we're doing that, we should try to at least move towards an ownership position on the property that we're leasing for a very long period of time. And I understand that the, the owners of the property or their agents might not want to do that because it's a very good deal for them. If I could recoup the cost of my building in a ten-year lease for part of my building, that's a very, very good deal for the, for the owner. But what, what I would suggest is perhaps we take another look at this so that maybe we could save the taxpayer some money and not move our operations away from county-owned facilities into leased facilities, but rather try to consistently keep our facilities as much as possible inside the county ownership circle, which wouldn't cost us any more. We're, we're talking the, a building that's going to be leased partially to us for the entire cost of the assessed value of the building currently. So, I guess I would make a motion that we lay this over so that we could continue the negotiations relative to that going towards a lease purchase agreement.
There's a motion to lay it over?
And I, I'd like to speak to that when the time is appropriate.
There's a second by Commissioner Boyle, if you are speaking on the amendment.
Excuse me, yes, and I, I think most people know, and I'll state it again if it's not clear, I've been a huge, huge proponent of getting out of the space where we are. It's, it's always bothered me that we're there, it's, I mean, it's a hell, take a helicopter to land there. And the address is so strange, you're, you're south of Dodge, but the address is north and all the rest of it. It's, it's served its purpose, and so we do need to move, there's no doubt about it. I was pushing for the Shopko site on 84th, before the Shopko left, that didn't work out. I was pushing for 84th and West Center on some property there, and I couldn't get the real estate agent to respond very well, which was kind of amazing. But I, I do think Mr. Kavanaugh's made some really excellent points. One of the things that concerns me, and it goes back to the days when I was in the mayor's office years and years ago, was that we had, you know, the Parks Director, Clarence Schaefer, came to me and told me one day that some park, I think Rock Brook or someplace, had asked for some kind of a park thing. And, and I said, what are we doing about it? He said, well, we put it on a list. I said, what do you do with the list? He said, well, it's just on the list. So, we established a capital improvement program. And in my opinion, we have never really funded the public property department to the extent that we should for maintenance and the rest. We've never, we, we, we really beat up some of these elected officials and departments, and it's not really fair. So, anyway, we need to come to grips with that. And I think in the long term and as quickly as possible, I think we need to develop a capital improvement program. And I say that because I spoke to Mr. Ewing a couple of days ago via email. The Department of Motor Vehicles is doing something really dramatic to us in Douglas County. They're virtually closing down everything. The furthest east to get a, to deal with the motor, Department of Motor Vehicles will be at 56th and Ames. And, and then the 108th and Maple and all these other things are closing down, there will be no DMV. So, we're probably going to have to go to Sarpy County to Highway Three, whatever it is, and 48th Street to get a deal with the DMV and, or 156th and Maple. So, it's, I'm really concerned about how the public are being, is being treated, taxpayers. This is just another problem that I have with, with constantly leasing. When you look at the, you know, we're paying property taxes to the school, and bless their hearts, they need the money, but I'd rather not be paying it as a taxing body. And I, I do think, I received an email, as I think we all did, and also I read the article in the, in the World Herald, written by Linda Ryan and her husband, Mike Ryan, who have helped us with environmental issues before. Very clearly, I mean, suggesting a really terrific piece of property in Miracle Hills that has parking galore to, to use a word. I, I really, I, I hate to ask for this to be slowed down. I am a complete supporter, as I said before, I think we're the best election commissioner, including me, right now. We got, we got a great one. And the work that's been done is, is good, except I just really think we ought to think about it. In that whole process with the courthouse and the Juvenile Justice Center, we're using four million dollars of inheritance money. And I ask, wouldn't it be better to take that money and try to buy something instead? Buy a building and not pay rent, own it ourselves? I think we've been on the wrong, wrong path for some time. And it's not that, I'm not condemning anybody, I'm just saying, let's take a breath and look at it. Lay it over for a little period of time, see if the owner's interested. I am concerned about a couple of things that are kind of weird. One is, I mentioned to legal counsel, the address, sounds like we're operating out of the basement because it has one half right at the end, which is kind of strange. Anyway, and I am concerned about who the neighbors are. I think it makes a difference because I sure don't want to have somebody- I think it makes a difference because I sure don't want to have somebody, you know, there's a fellow right now that's battling with the city over a, I don't know how to describe the bar. I won't use the words, but it'd be pretty disastrous if we ended up with something like that as our neighbor. So, I really would like to lay this over for, at least till the 26th. That's the next time we meet. And then get a little few more figures on, you know, Joe, Joe, Joe Rags, I'm saying, Joe, our finance guy, Mr. Lorenz, told me the term of the lease and the cost would be 1.3 million. That would be, that would be the cost of the lease for the life, which isn't frankly all that bad, except that I really would like more information before we vote on something like this. Can we lay it, and so that's why I support the layover till the 26th. Thank you.
No, there's a sec, there is a motion and a second to the amendment. Speaking, anybody else wants to speak on this? You speaking on the amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
One of the rationale for the amendment, I just want to make sure I'm clear because I'm hearing you say that we moved our storage out of the Fitzgerald home some time ago into leased space, and yet I just heard we're moving from county-owned property to leased space with the storage. But the truth is, we're moving from leased space to leased space. I'm not seeing why we would lay it over. Thank you.
Peter, you want to speak here on the amendment?
I'll wait.
Okay. So, you're speaking on the amendment?
Well, Commissioner Boyle recommended a date certain for the layover, which I would agree to.
Okay. Okay, before we vote, let me just say, I'd advise to vote against it because we've talked about this in executive session, they've talked about it in public. And I think they've exhausted the means to find something nobody's selling. And so, this is where we came to after, I mean, I think that we've been on at least two months in getting updates on it. So, with that, there's a motion and a second to lay over to the 26th. And with that, please vote.
I'll be abstaining.
Motion fails. Commissioner Morgan abstains. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Boyle vote yes, but the other, all the rest of the commissioners vote no.
So, back on the original motion, Commissioner Morgan was up.
As all of you know, when you had discussion on this, I made sure I left the room, the executive session. And I've always said, you can ask me any questions, and I try to answer them. I have not been involved in this. Ryan Ellis, who's worked for me almost 20 years now, and president of my company, has been the one, I think, dealing with you. When the request was made for proposals, our company, as you do with GSA or anything else, you submit a proposal, and then you hope that you might hear something back, that they've decided to negotiate with a couple of the properties concerning possibly leasing. I want to mention something about real estate that I think all of you are fairly aware of. It's important to talk about the rent, which will amount to somewhere around that million-two or whatever it is. I want you to keep in mind that if you walk through that space, when it's done, it was a former Richmond Gordman store, and had been there, and the owners do not want to sell it, as you stated. Brian, the fact is, if you look at this space, there'll be over $120 a foot spent when you unlock that door and walk into that space with lighting, plumbing, walls, et cetera, flooring, and so on. We know those are cost numbers. The reason people can't do five-year leases, and we just signed one with Dr. Greeter, a dentist, expanding his space, TI costs somewhere, if it's doctors, tenant improvement money, which the owner pays, there's over a million dollars spent on improvements. And when you lease the other part of that building, the owner's going to end up spending another 80 to $120 to get, whether it's an insurance agency or if it's doctors, it'd be even more than that. So, that's important to know, that it wasn't just like warehouse space. It's finished space. So, that's what makes it difficult for the longer-term lease. Dr. Greeter, a dentist, that's why he signed 10 years, because the owner couldn't make it work with just signing five years. He wouldn't even come close to getting his tenant improvement money back in seven years even. So, that's the challenge that you have. And again, I want to repeat that you did go out for an RFP in the community and sent it out to everyone. And Jerry, you please correct me if I'm stating something incorrect in this a few years. And I assume that at some point, this board will decide that as surplus property there on 115th and work to have some offers, hopefully that'll be positive for the county.
Yes, both 114th and 315th making circle will be surplus, so there should be revenue coming back to the county.
And do me the favor of correcting anything I stated to correct it. And I mean that sincerely, whether you want to or not, I want you to say that.
No, you're correct. We did the RFP, and we actually had two areas on 84th that Commissioner Boyle and I, and I think maybe Commissioner Morgan, and Commissioner Borges walked it and threw it out.
Okay, based on the new rules, that's Commissioner Morgan's time. Any other questions for them on this? There's a motion and a second. Any other questions for anyone? Commissioner Boyle?
I am serious about the address. I think it, I would like to see us have a nice, clean address of some sort. I don't know how you go about doing that, but it's really weird to have a, what is it, 120?
I think we can work with
Just get rid of that hat.
City planning on that. They send us address changes every month for addresses in the election commission.
Or they can send the ballots directly to me, whatever works best.
You'll have to change your party first.
Oh, wow.
Only kidding.
Little testy.
So, Commissioner Dugan, you did, but did you get yours out into?
My move.
Okay. Okay, there's motion and a second to approve the item. Seeing no more discussion. Please vote.
I will be abstaining again, Dan.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstains. Commissioner Kavanaugh votes no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with the board. Thank you.
Item I is approval of the WellPath LLC contract to provide comprehensive inmate health and mental health services for Douglas County Department of Corrections. Mike, you all want to start, and then we'll open it up to what questions, Matt? And so, Mike, note, on the new rules, you're on the clock, so you got five minutes to lay this out, then I'll get the questions. I'm going to give them a chance so they can ask questions.
So, the process of approving the medical contract actually began prior to my tenure as taking over as the department director. What I can tell you is that we went through a very exhaustive, meticulous process in crafting this contract. We have added additional services in terms of mental health and medical care. We also have added, and I have Captain Mary Early here to correct me because she's more day-to-day on this than what I am able to be. But we've also added some more discretion on our part. Should we ever get into a situation where we have a lack of confidence in a few key, critical positions, that we can force the contractor to make a change in certain critical positions, such as the medical director, the health services administrator, et cetera. As I mentioned during my Board of Corrections report, we, I've been very pleased with the level of engagement and the philosophy that the current leadership team of WellPath has locally. And that's critical for us to continue. It is very, I will not automatically trust anybody with medical care. We will always be verifying and pushing them to adhere to the standards of the contract and to deliver quality care to our population.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Thank you. So, this contract, which runs to 93 pages plus exhibits, mentions that there is a $6.2 million per year cost. Is that to the existing WellPath contract that the county has with them? Is that the existing contract cost?
No, that we, there is an increase, but there isn't, there's associated additional services that are being provided with that increase.
Okay, because on page seven, I'm, yeah, it does mention a base price of $6,250,683.05. That's not the same as the contract that we currently are engaged with them, or is it?
Good morning, Commissioners Captain Mary Early. That is not the cost of the current contract. Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. That is not the cost of the current contract. The figure that you mentioned is inclusive of a no cap. The previous contract had a per-cap cost per inmate per year. This contract does not have that cap. And as Director Myers indicated, it also added quite significant staffing increases.
Okay, is this in lieu then of the other contract? This replaces that contract?
Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner, it does. The current contract expires the end of the month.
Okay. And what's the annual base price of that contract?
Deputy Director Redmond is going to get that figure for you, Commissioner.
Fine. In the meantime, it looks like that's a little over half a million dollars a month per year. But there appear to be some provisions in there, and I don't know if these adjust the price of the contract, and I'd ask you to help us understand that, that had to do with credits, and I don't know if this is an escalator provision or what, the average daily population range, that if we exceed that, or we maybe fall under that, that the cost per inmate would change. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So, the cost per day, per inmate, under the new contract is $13.70 per day, per inmate. So, if we stay under the range, I believe, if you look at Exhibit 1B, the base pricing range, for year one, our base pricing range is between, and this is for local population only. It does not include federal or immigration. So, this is our local base population, between 1175 and 1325 for average daily population. So, if we stay within that range, then the price per inmate per day stays at 1370. If we exceed that 1,325 average daily population, then the per diem rate, there's an additional, for the additional inmates, it's $2.34 per inmate per day increase. Just for the, just for the individuals that are over that 1325 average daily population. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, for populations ranging up to 1375 per day?
1325.
1325 the first year, 1375 the third year. Is that right?
Up to the third year, yes, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. For populations between 1325 and 1375, over the term of this three-year contract, the per diem, per inmate, goes from what to what? I think that's what you're saying. I'm just trying to get it clear.
Yes. If you look, if you look at Attachment 1A, the average daily population, the figures are a little, are a little bit different, but if we go between 1300 and 1400, it's $14.80 per day.
Okay.
But it's just for the folks that exceed that initial cap. It's not for everybody.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Yes, it is. And I'm, I see now, there is a population average that we have. I think that Director Myers just indicated to us that the average daily population right now is 1298. And so, based on that, that's just the report that we had this morning, we're paying 1370 per inmate, based on this scale. Is that correct?
Currently, not. No, that would be with the new contract.
Okay.
And the, and the average daily population includes all our population, local, immigration, and federal, the United States Marshal.
Uh huh.
So, the, those folks are not included in the local base price range.
Okay.
So, the figures, extensive math, and forgive me, I don't have it in front of me, but we did, we did go over averages and estimate our local population out as best we could, future, for the future. And we can only hold so many people, so that, that helps too.
Right. So, what you're saying is, you deduct all of the non-county holds from our average daily population for this calculation. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, rather than being the average daily population, I think that you were giving us the gross number of 1298 for everybody. It would be some number below 1298. I don't know if you know that off the top of your head.
I can give you a pretty close, we, during construction, we've kind of put a cap on our federal holds. And it's probably around 130.
Okay. Just to make this as simple as possible, the current inmate patient cost, per capita cost, is what?
Okay, we're going to have to do more math, but I do have the annual, which is 5,698,795. However, with the per inmate, per diem adjustment for population, we're paying approximately $25,000 additional a month. And we're currently paying anything over the per inmate cost per year for the cap of $51,792. Last year, 21,300, I believe, was spent in off-site medical care expenses total. The county actually picked up the tab for everything per inmate over 51,792. There were some significant costs incurred. Again, I don't have those exact figures. Amber's waving at me again. Thank you. Thank you, Amber.
Yeah.
We know who the mathematician is in the room. Commissioner Morgan and Amber Redmond.
I appreciate that. I mean, just trying to break it down to its most basic numbers, we're at a contract amount now of 5.6 million dollars and change, and we are going to a new contract, base price of 6.25, or six and a quarter million, you know, for roughly three-quarters of a million dollar increase, more or less.
Commissioner, if you would, please add the $25,000 a month per cap, or per diem cost because the local population has increased significantly since the beginning of this contract. You're going to have to have $300,000 added to the 5,69 figure.
Okay, okay. So, it would be more like 5.9 or close to 6 million under the current contract, paid, actually paid.
Correct, plus the over-cap expenses per inmate.
And the base that we're going into is 6.2, and presumably, the same phenomena could occur there where that base would be exceeded by the same function.
Except for the fact that we have some protections this time where there's no per inmate cap. So, if we have somebody who is going to off-site medical care hospitalized, and those bills get above the cap, we are not responsible for those additional costs anymore.
But yes, our count, but yes, our count could go up.
Right, right, which would get us into one of these higher per capita categories for that portion of the population.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking at, you know, we talked about this when the last contract came up, is we're spending 600 and a quarter million dollars to treat this population. And we could probably do this for the same, or possibly less, if we did it ourselves. You know, six and a quarter million dollars will buy you a lot of healthcare. I mean, will buy you doctors and nurses and beds for a lot of I mean, will buy you doctors and nurses and beds for a lot of people. And I, you know, I really question us entering into these contracts, which have, in the past, caused us lots of legal problems. When we do run a healthcare center, and we do have a lot of doctors and nurses on staff currently, it's something that we do, and for six and a quarter million dollars, and it'll be more than that, I submit that possibly we should look at internalizing this function, as it was once part of the county's function going back historically, again, and using, again, our own resources, we have a footprint over there that contains real estate that we could convert into a discreet center for people with healthcare problems, particularly the mental healthcare problems. Reports month after month after month from the director indicate a high incidence of inmates presenting with mental healthcare problems, and they're not adequately treated there. I don't know, because it's difficult to ascertain from this almost 100-page contract, if we are going to have actual increase in doctor-patient interaction. What I'm saying is, we don't have any doctors on staff there, and we haven't for four years that I'm aware of. We don't have a doctor at the correction center every day.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, under this contract?
Yes, in the previous one, we have a full-time physician, a full-time APRN, nurse practitioner, and we have the equivalent of a full-time APRN psych.
Okay, for 24 hours a day?
Well, no one works 24 hours a day, Commissioner.
Oh, hospitals work 24 hours a day all the time.
Right, but we do have on-call provisions for all of those.
I understand, but if we have sick people, they're not on an eight-hour, "I'm sick", you know, the balance of the time, "I'm okay", they're sick 24 hours a day. So, what we don't have is 24-hour healthcare services under this contract.
Actually, yes, we do, Commissioner. There's several positions, if you look at the attachment on the last, for staffing. Forgive me, I don't have the attachment numbers memorized. Where do I have it pulled up anywhere? There it is. Exhibit four, staffing table. All the positions with asterisk are backfilled, which means we have coverage for those positions. Well, like the RN charge is 24 hours a day, infirmary clinic, 24 hours a day, CMA clinic. Several of those positions are backfilled 24 hours a day. So, we do have onsite medical care 24/7, which is required.
Right. So, I'm looking at that, and under this, we have a health service administrator, a medical director. Which one of these are actually MD physicians? I'm looking down here, and I don't want to read the whole list, but I don't see one that's actually delineated as a MD.
The medical director is the MD.
Okay, and that's an eight-hour-a-day thing?
Yes, and the job description's attached on Exhibit 7.
I'm sorry?
The job description's attached on Exhibit 7 for the medical.
Right, I'm looking at the Exhibit 4 that you pointed out. So, we have the medical director as an MD, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And any of these other individuals are MDs? If you know.
No, they're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to Commissioner Boy? You got a question for them? Oh, wait, sorry, Commissioner Boy, I'm sorry, craft.
Yes.
I want to go before him, I'm just kidding.
Well, yeah, I came in here thinking this was going to be a short meeting, but deja vu. Item A and item I, we discussed in length. Am I correct, this is the same contract we approved September 11th, except for the name change?
In essence, you approved their proposal and gave us authority to negotiate the details.
Okay, and are the details any different than their proposal? They are?
Yes, yes, they are. We actually got more staffing and negotiated that out at the same cost.
That's what I thought. And we also got more psychiatrists, psychiatric help, didn't we?
That number is consistent with the original bid, yes.
Okay, and doing a little bit of preliminary research, to hire a psychologist in a situation like this starts at $165,000 a year per psychiatrist, if you can find one. If. Or more, yes, that's why I said starts at. And perhaps Mr. Kavanaugh forgot that we approved this contract. He's bringing up the same arguments that we countered at that time, because we don't have the staff, we don't have the ability, and we don't want the additional liability of taking it on ourself. Right now, they are subjected to the first named in the lawsuits, and we're indemnified from them. You know, this was the best of four bids. The major change that I see is the name of the company, because I forgot what the previous name was, but Wellmark purchased them. And, yeah, I really thought that we had argued this out already, and it's a shame we have to argue it again and again and again, and we'll probably repeat it 31 times. So, maybe it's because somebody thinks I forget, and needed to be reminded and reminded and reminded. I like to think I remember, but this is deja vu, thank you.
Commissioner Boy.
Well, I know some of these things haven't been gone over, but I think it's really important. This is a very important service that we have to provide. I've got some questions about, for example, there's some language at 1.2.2.1 that is dealing with who gets care. And I really wonder, is a person who is in house arrest, or is on electronic surveillance, or, and it says, or detention, is that person in our custody? Do we have to provide care for those people? It seems to me that a person who is under house arrest maybe could argue they're in our custody. And I'd ask the legal counsel whether or not that's, but that's, these people are excluded from coverage. I just want to make sure we don't find ourselves in, and I don't need an answer today, but I just bring that up. If you have the answer, that'd be great.
Tracy York County Attorney's Office. So, if I understand your question, Commissioner, it's the 1.2.11, those are exclusions from the contract. I think they've been exclusions from the contract in the previous contracts. There is some case law regarding the county's responsibility to people on such things as house arrest, and I don't believe it extends to medical care.
Okay, great, that's fine then.
And Commissioner, they do agree as a condition of going to house arrest or community corrections that they're responsible for their medical care. We certainly assist them in getting them in touch with the resources they need to maintain their care.
And, you know, the whole field of contracting anything really with corrections, in my estimation, is always fraught with a great deal of difficulty. I mean, some of these, some of the, thank God we're not running one of private jail, is really, oh, wow, something else. So, this is kind of borderline for me. In the past, let me ask you a question, they're being paid for services rendered. Now, they don't get to keep, you know, if they render $4 million worth of services, they don't get to keep $2 million, do they?
We pay a base contract fee per month.
So, in other words?
That's what's negotiated.
Okay, so, that's my concern, because we've been through that mud fight before, because we had, I clearly remember, years ago, and it wasn't this company, but years ago, a woman was convulsing on the floor in the unit, maybe you remember this, inside the cell, and other, a male person, I don't know who he was, what his position was, probably a guard of some sort or whatever, he ran in to render aid, and he was yelling to people to call 911, and they said, "We can't". And that was a company in Philadelphia. You had, we had to call a doctor in Philadelphia, can we call 911?
Absolutely.
What?
Absolutely, yes, we can't.
Well, I don't want that to happen. If somebody, and this person, this fellow who ran in, was eventually fired by us, and sued us, and walked out with a quarter of a million dollars, because, you know, he rendered aid, and then he was canned because of it. I want to make sure that we don't have a company that we're hiring somebody that has an incentive not to give care. I mean, I've heard enough of these lawsuits where it says, you know, "Go take an aspirin", you know, and I believe what's being said, because it is a court document. This is not some hearsay that some inmate is telling somebody else. I want to be assured that we're not giving people money to turn down, they don't walk out with, it's an incentive not to give care. Is there an incentive not to give care in this contract? Financial incentive?
Commissioner, I don't believe that there is an incentive not to give care. They will look at people who are in off-site medical care and work with those providers, if we have somebody in the hospital, to see what conditions, what progress that person needs to make to be safely transferred back to the jail once they're healthy enough to do so. We certainly will call 911 whenever it's necessary.
Will they?
Yes, we will do it. I mean, I, this is my, like I said, this is among my, there is no more important priority than the health and well-being of the people who come into our custody.
Okay, well, this, your answer concerns me greatly, because what I really hear you saying is that we're paying them 6-point-something million divided by 12 a month. And if they don't give anybody an aspirin, they get the money. And I am worried that the cost of, that they are saving, that the cost of rendering care is being denied, so that they can walk out with a check. They get the check, they don't give a damn, I mean, I don't think they have to give a damn, who gets care. That flies in the face of what I said earlier about the three groups of people we must step up and give the best care possible. They don't have options. And I've read, frankly, and I told counsel I'm going to do this, I read some of the lawsuits filed against us, and this company, while it changed its name, I don't blame them, I changed my name to Jim Smith too. But, I mean, I know it was a merger, that was a cheap shot, but, and I apologize for it, but the point is that some of those, some inmates were told, kind of like, "Just relax, go take a Tylenol", and it was inappropriate. And I'm concerned, we've got the same people here, and I know you've got a different director, but I'm so concerned that these, and the other thing is how they're paid. If they're paid, you know, a million dollars, or half a million, or $700,000 a month, regardless of what medical aid they give, that's unethical, I think. I think it's unethical to do that, because it's, if they're not getting instructions from home office about save money, just like we are here, save money, that bothers me. So, I'm going to have to vote against this contract, because I didn't, I never thought about it until this came up today. I started looking at it again, and I apologize to my commissioners for asking this question, but I think all of us should be concerned about that.
Commissioner, you raised some very important concerns. Addressing those concerns is in one part why this contract is as lengthy as it is, because it does provide all of the scenarios for the service provision, which are intended to prevent the, any unfortunate occurrences that result from any sort of negligence or lack of quality care.
I wanted to ask, do we have, I understand what you're saying, I don't, I'm still very concerned about it. Is there at present, or will there be, an inmate advocate? If someone is told, "Go back to bed, go into your cell, or where, get the hell out of here, and go take a Tylenol", is there someone that, to whom the inmate can turn and say, "Hey, listen, they told me to forget it, and I've got a broken arm", or whatever? Is there someone, or has there been?
Absolutely. Captain Early is the contract monitor, and other organizational changes that I'm making on our side of the operation provide avenues for inmates to communicate directly with us. And then, I see the emails every day, you know, not every day, but frequently, on the correspondence that, for us, looking into any medical concern or complaint that an inmate has about the care that they've received. We also make the state ombudsman's office information available to the inmates, and we get, and they exercise that.
The state?
The ombudsman's office at the state has oversight over jails, and we respond to probably two or three ombudsman, you know, complaints that inmates have made. You know, I would say one or two a week is probably a better estimate.
Sure.
And there's a lot, there's, Captain Early and the staff that are there currently do an excellent job with their record-keeping, and it's very meticulous, and we see, we can respond when any one of the time that those issues comes up, we can respond with, you requested a service on this date, you saw the doctor on this date, or the nurse practitioner on that date, and so on. That's the typical response. But the inmates do have remedies built in, in our policies and procedures, that transcend this contract, to assure that if their concerns arise, that we have them. It is our response, ultimately, our responsibility, to make sure that this contract is enforced in a way that quality care is given for each and every inmate.
So, the decision to render care is, belongs to whom, or who has that?
So, well, it is up, Wellpath, they are the medical professionals that we are hiring to provide the care. So, what type of care and the level of care that's required are medical decisions made by medical professionals. We look over their shoulder and look for any process-related issues. Did they wait too long to respond? Did they not give the appropriate level of response? Those are things that, as a contract-compliance function, that we fulfill.
Will you be able to tell us in your report, monthly report, how much money has been, actually, how much money was spent on healthcare? You know, I know we're going to pay them X number of dollars a month, but how much of that is actually spent on healthcare? Are you able to tell us that? That bothers me terrifically, because, well, just because. If they're profiting from not, you know, are we paying them too much? Are they profiting from turning down people? Do they make money by not rendering aid? I'm really concerned about that, because if, that's an incentive that somebody in, you know, New Jersey is saying, "Don't do that". I mean, I really am very concerned, and that's what we did before, which is, to me, unethical, so, anyway.
I understand that concern, Commissioner.
Do you think you can report that?
I will, I'll talk with Mary and Amber and see what, how we can break this out for you on an ongoing basis. There are certain things that they have to do for everyone. You know, everybody who's in custody more than two weeks has to get a history and physical. Everybody needs to be, have a medical assessment upon their booking. So, those are services that they have to provide for everyone. Beyond those services, it's as we become aware of medical problems, then they provide the care accordingly. So, it's, it'll be a little bit difficult, I think, to tease out those details, because there are some things that get done that are just standard for everyone.
Well, I guess I'm looking at it as the discretionary things, where they're able to keep money for not giving care to someone. I want to, and I don't, and there's a terrible motive in that, and it's called money.
Absolutely, and I'll tell you, Commissioners, we routinely have one to three inmates out, admitted to the hospital at any given time.
Right.
I see a, an ambulance pull up to the jail, you know, on a weekly basis.
Right.
So, I know as people's needs get above and beyond the level of, that can be provided for inside of the jail, people are going out to get the appropriate level of care in the community. That comes at expense to them, to the contractor. It also comes at expense to us, because we also have to staff those positions at the top. We have to station a correctional officer present, or two, depending upon the level of offender at the hospital.
Well, I have more questions, but I think what I'll do is wait and visit with you, not that I don't want them, they're okay to be public, but I don't want to drag this on any further. But I am alarmed by it, and we've got to find some real strong oversight. I'm concerned that people who are in that position, and I can understand it, becoming hardened. You know, the same inmate comes in, putting out a kite, that, you know, and bling, they're sitting in the chair, and they're, you know, they're getting out of their cell and all the rest of it, and they become, it would be easy to become hardened, and say, you know, "This jack is really a, you know, we don't give a damn about it". I'm really concerned about people become hardened at that, because they're dealing with people who have made a mistake, and they, some people don't hold them in high regard, as a, don't believe in a second chance, or something. Anyway, I'm through with my questions, and I apologize to the board for asking these questions, but I think they're very important, and I think the money issue really is something that we need to keep a close eyeball on, because... that we need to keep a close eyeball on because it's a big deal. I do want to ask legal counsel about, we have, who is, who is really, I've read some in this long document, I came across a, a lot of talk about liability and who's liable and all the rest. Who do, are, is this organization, are they the first ones that get named, and aren't we co-defendants in lawsuits? I mean, after all, we are the deep pocket, aren't we?
Tricia York County Attorney's Office. We have to answer in two parts, if I may. We have no, first part, we have no control over who gets named in a lawsuit. The plaintiff would determine that, and often they name everyone, so that's very, very common. So we, we would probably be, probably be named along with the company. With regards to, second part, with regards to the indemnification, there are provisions within the contract about having the contractor indemnify us if it is their fault. And I would just direct your attention to section six, and I think it's 6.5, that has that indemnification language in there.
Okay. Thank you, and, thank you very much, and good luck.
Commissioner, there's some, Captain Early mentioned, there is a, a medical staff meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
At 4:00 PM. Any of the commissioners are welcome to attend that meeting.
Great, 4:00 at your place?
Correct.
In the, in the medical area, and you have been formally involved.
And, and if you can't make that one, we'll let you know when the subsequent meetings are.
Okay, 4:00 Thursday?
Correct.
Thanks, thank you, and thank you very much. It's been difficult, I know. Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, I'll try to be short. You answered the question, they do the intake screening, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I buy health insurance, I buy life insurance, I buy property insurance, pretty much by hiring these people, we're buying an insurance policy. Can you view it that way or not?
They're, in, in, in the, if the analogy is that we have some certainty to our costs, and, and we, we're paying this on a regular basis to avoid the ups and downs of expensive medical care, yes.
Correct, yeah, yes. And, and we're dealing oftentimes with a marginal, marginalized population that cannot make bail. Well, they can't also pay for a doctor's visit. They don't have insurance. So they come to us, and often they're more, they're suffering from more maladies than the average citizen. So these doctors are dealing with a more intense population, plus they can be dealing with a very angry population, and a very violent population. So I, I would like to make the motion that we approve this contract.
Just a second, a second. Motion, a second, to approve the contract. Any discussion? More? Please vote.
We're voting on the lease, or the?
Proven the contract, yes.
Commissioner Boyle voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Okay, we'll go to item number three, recognitions and proclamations. Item A is the recognition of the following county employees retired. Roseman Swartzell, who worked at the Douglas County Health Center for 15 years of service. Also Janet Lango, who's retired from the Douglas County Attorney's Office after 25 years. Are any of them here by chance? Seeing none, is there a motion and a?
We approve of the?
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle, and I'd like to add my congratulations to them and wish them well in their retirement. Please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Mr. Chair, before we move much further, I, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the lease that we passed on the election office. I was on the prevailing side, I voted yes, but I would like to ask that it be brought back for a vote and laid over until the 26th.
There's a motion to reconsider? There's a second?
Vote yes to reconsider.
Motion fails. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Boyle voting yes, all other commissioners voting no.
Okay. Onto item four, which is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any item that is not officially listed on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
May I read my comments?
Sure.
Or have the rules been changed? I, I don't know.
You got five minutes.
Okay. I'd like to read what citizens' comments says, and what it probably ought to say. I don't see a whole lot of citizens here, and maybe this is why. If you take your agenda items that says citizens' comments and make some amendments, you might get more public participation. So I'm gonna read a suggested amendment. This is an open meeting time for members of the taxpaying public to be heard at this time for a maximum of five minutes on any topic, I guess, that the commissioners choose, choose to hear, but not on the agenda as it relates to the governance of Douglas County. However, under the Open Meetings Act, the board agenda items, public might have to come down to find out what they can or cannot talk about. But why would they if they can't talk about what's currently discussed? The board should give more adequate, understandable notice of what is or is not going to be on the agenda before it happens, to be more transparent, if you will, and some knowledge as to what you do not intend to hear, so that we don't have to argue with the microphone. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to items five, which is public hearing. Item A is the Class AB 122877, license for bar on and of sale for ZipLine Brewing Company at 3808 South 20, 203rd Plaza, Suite 100, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. We'll open the public hearing for this item. Anyone want to comment in public hearing?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tom Wilmeth. I'm one of the founders and owners of ZipLine Brewing Company. We are currently Nebraska's largest craft brewery. We have three retail locations, one in downtown, north downtown Omaha currently, and this is a proposal to open a second location on the west side of town at 204th. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Did you bring your semi-samplers?
Maybe that's an executive session issue.
Seeing no questions, anyone else from the public want to comment on this? We are in public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, there's a second by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Item seven, under committees in discussion, item A is finance committee budget report.
As presented?
As asked presented. Item B, and then, item B, administrative services. Item one is approval and agreement with MAPPA to receive GIS data sales revenue. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
While we're voting, I'll just say this is more money came in than we had anticipated. This is a good thing.
Money can buy a beer. So you know, drank, that's what bad.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Okay. Item C is child and youth services. Item one is a resolution allocating $31,000 in initial funding for the behavioral health screening and assessment pilot project. Let me begin this item. This was presented in August in detail, and the board got the detail of it there, ready now in respects to starting it. The request is not budgeted, as when this started, we agreed that we would come forward with this. What the payment does, how the payment for this is being made is through, one, private funding, two, existing funding through state probation, and we will pay the balance of this for the project that will go to the end of the year. In talking to the, our finance director, my understanding is the budget in the youth center is favorable at this point, and they're gonna try to absorb this through that as of this point. So with that, again, we presented this in August in detail. This is in a pilot to get at the evaluations and other behavioral health services to move them through that we talked about. So with that, I will end and open it up to the public for any proponents or opponents on the issue. Any proponents? Any opponents? Please come.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I just simply like to question whether this is a pilot program or not. I just remember back in 2014, there was a contract signed with Sherwood Foundation and Terra Luna to do certain things in the juvenile center. And I have never heard that that was ever, ever became defunct. I gave a copy of that to some people on the, on the board of supervisors, and I know there's a lot of ladies running around Omaha that were interested in the topic. So I think we would all question whether it's a pilot program, and who's really behind it. Thank you.
So Larry, for the record, that, that 20, and that 2014 agreement was not between the board, it was a agreement where they were doing evaluations for Operation Youth Success, it was not between the board and the youth center?
Well, the public doesn't really know what that was all about, Chris.
Well, it didn't, and, but the point I'm bringing up to you is it, it wasn't a board matter, it didn't come before the board, there's not a contract to that matter.
Hmm. I had a copy of it, and I made copies for people.
I guarantee you.
Thank you. I don't care to argue again today, sir.
Me neither, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, any more opponents or proponents? With that, I would entertain the will of the board. There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second. With that, exercising the new rules, Commissioner Boyle, and then Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, Mr. Chair, too, and I, I must make a comment. I'm so pleased to hear you respond to a speaker at the podium because that's very important to set the record straight, and I understand, I appreciate Larry stepping forward as well. I, I am in favor of this. The children who come to us and are in the youth center have very different backgrounds, but one of the most significant characteristics they all have is trauma. They have seen their mother being beaten by someone, they've seen their cousin getting shot in the head, they've witnessed their sister getting stabbed or raped. I mean, terrible things have been happening, and the trauma that they bring with them is affecting them dramatically. And so I am very pleased to see that this agreement with UNMC Creighton and the Charles Through Health Center is on the table. This is really, really critical. This is the most important board action we'll take today. So I really appreciate your bringing it forward, Mr. Chair, and look forward to a real successful program. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions. I see Mr. Alexander here, the director of the youth center, maybe he could help us out a little bit. Recently, when I toured your facility, I met with the folks who staffed the clinic there and asked them, okay, if you could have one thing at the top of your list, what would it be? And they unanimously said adolescent psychiatrist to treat the children under their care. Does, does this provide that? Is this what we're talking about here?
Yeah, I think to, to a large extent it does. I mean, the $31,000 that the youth center will be contributing goes towards evaluations and medical management, and that medical management will be handled by a psychiatrist. And I think that's the feedback that you'd gotten from our nurses on that day. So I, I'm excited about the prospect.
All right, and, and that's a good thing.
It's a very good thing.
I, I think, when I did some research on this, we're talking about a .1 FTE for these functions, is that correct?
I don't have the budget in front of me, but I believe, is that right, Dr.? Yeah.
Okay, so that's a, that's a tenth of a full-time person to do psychiatric assessments, including medication management and dual diagnosis, evaluation, treatment, and consultation services. So someone would be there, I guess if, if a full-time person is 40 hours a week, someone would?
About eight hours a week.
Sorry?
I said, I think it's about eight hours a week.
This would be about eight hours a week?
Yeah.
And that would be an adolescent psychiatrist onsite, eight hours a week?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. Now, I, I think I understand what assessments are, and that person would perform those, and I understand diagnosis. The treatment component of this, what, what type of treatment, if you know, would we be talking about?
Well, certainly the experts are behind me, so that would, they'd probably be the best people to answer that, but there's, what I'm excited about is the evaluations. Hopefully, there'll be some opportunities to shorten links this day. And I'm also really excited about the opportunity for somebody like these folks to take these kids as they leave the youth center to help to ensure that their care continues, and ultimately, they don't return to the youth center.
Right. Now, just, we'll get to the experts here in just a second, but?
I can feel them behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that.
This, this assessment thing that you mentioned, that you're excited about, and, and I've heard some reference to the fact that this may help us impact our population to bring it down. Is that part of that, the assessment component of this function?
I think anytime you have an opportunity to make something happen for a kid sooner, I think that's a good thing. We really struggle with some of the sexual evaluations. Those seem to be difficult to find a provider to do. I, I believe we're gonna have greater accessibility to those folks through this. And so, yeah, I think we could be optimistic that some things that kids need to see happen is going to happen sooner going forward with this, with this.
Okay, and I think I heard Mr. Rogers say that you felt that you could absorb this $31,000 in your current operation.
Hope so.
That's good. But would this be kind of, you know, the beginning of something that we could hopefully see on a more robust level going forward? Is that, is that kind of?
Well, this is, I mean, to answer Larry's question, I mean, it is a pilot, it's a six-month pilot.
Uh-huh.
And then there's gonna be some evaluations that take place towards the end of that six months, and I hope that there'll be, that, you know, we may have moved some data. That seems like an awful short period of time to, to really see anything significant, but my hope is that we're gonna see some things that we can all get behind, and, and it'll continue going forward.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's not the, the whole package that we'd all like to see, but it's a beginning.
Yes, sir.
We're at, none of these services are currently being provided right now, and now we will have some. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we've got the, a great contract with UNMC, so we have a pediatrician and some other people that come up to the youth center. My light's on.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And we've got the psychologist, and then we've got three LMHPs. When you talk to people, my counterparts were pretty fortunate in that regard, and this just only enhances what we're doing, absolutely.
Great, great. So we'll see you back in six months, maybe with, you know, a follow-up proposal? Is that the plan?
That's the plan, yes, sir.
Great, thank you. I do maybe have one question of one of the doctors here present, I don't know which one would like to take the?
And you can get it on the second try. Based on the new rules, that's the first one.
Okay.
Commissioner Duda, is?
Thank you. I, I just want to say what a great thing, Commissioner Boyle's right, this is, this is so important. As we talk about trying our long-term vision, better juvenile detention services, however that evolves, we've said, until the community says, recognizes that these are all of our children, they're, they're not his kids, they're our kids, and the community is. This is, this is our best shot at making true improvements to the system. We can only do it with the help and backing of, Omaha's blessed with a lot of great resources, and, and to have, I mean, whether it's the med center? And, and to have, I mean, whether it's the Med Center, Charles Drew, Creighton coming forward, willing to work with us to help us address this problem, I'm excited about this. I think the potential is great. I don't know of a better way to try to achieve what we're trying to achieve than without these community partners. And I very much appreciate them stepping forward and look forward to seeing what we can do together. What an exciting pilot.
I'm going to use, you all, if you want to come up now, I'm going to set the stage and give it to you. I apologize, I looked in the piece and I gave the budget, and I thought it was in there. And I don't know if it didn't get included because the original number that I gave was the, was sixty-one that was given. That's for a full year. To the question that was posed about, you know, this is the, the pilot stage to get it in, the hope is that we'll get another year next year, and it's going to be planned to ask for the full sixty-one in the budget next year with help from the same funding sources to get it up. So because the budget didn't show up, Dr. Liu, if you want to use your time to walk through that, I please, you can use the time to do that.
Sure, thank you very much. My name is Dr. Howard Liu, I'm the chair of psychiatry, child psychiatrist at UNMC. Happy to walk through the budget, and thanks very much, commissioners. So on the Douglas County side, it's a two-part proposal. And on the Douglas County Youth Center side, as was previously discussed, we do have some time. Point one FTE roughly translates to a half-day a week, and so there's two of those components. One is a child psychiatrist who has expertise in mental health, all aspects of mental health, and also has forensic expertise. That would be Dr. Pope, that would be working in that function. And really would be doing a lot of the assessments, the evaluations, answering medication management questions that required kind of complexity and so on, in partnership with the existing and excellent staff at Douglas County Youth Center. The other piece would be Dr. Ken Zuhus to my left here, who is an addiction medicine, boarded physician, a pediatrician, and also an expert in this area, who happens to be our addiction medicine division director at UNMC Psychiatry. And so what he will also offer is what we call dual diagnosis, where you have mental health plus the addiction piece also working in tandem. And I think that's going to be really important because we know that certainly for many of these youth, they happen to also have co-occurring substance use disorders that also kind of get them in trouble, and then sometimes they'll go untreated, and then when they are discharged, then they'll relapse, and then it will kind of set off another cycle, leading to further confinement. So really, that's the concern, and that's why we're building those components in. We very much value the community, and so we did build in a program co-coordinators, you know, that will help to facilitate the reentry to Charles Drew Health Center, and to my right is the executive director of Charles Drew Health Center to speak to that piece of it. And so we really believe that this, this basically union of mental health, addiction, and community navigation is going to be very much important to provide trauma-informed care for these youth. And I defer to my colleagues to speak more on, on any of those questions.
Can we hit the addiction side first?
Sure, sure. So my name's Dr. Ken Zuhus, I'm a pediatrician and addiction medicine physician. And so I have been working in adolescent addiction services for a number of years now. And, and in my role at the Hastings Regional Center, as well as at the Youth Rehabilitation Treatment Centers, one of the things that we saw was just recurrent kids ending up in the same position over and over again because of not receiving the treatment that they needed. So what this provides is an ability to do an initial assessment for youth, determine appropriate level of care, and then also make sure that that level of care gets received once they are discharged from the, from the Douglas County Youth Center. And so a role in being able to facilitate that through the navigators as an addiction medicine physician, I think is going to be really important. And I think, again, will reduce the recidivism. It can also reduce the length of stay that the youth have at, at the secure care placements so that they get the, the evaluations, and then the recommendations for appropriate care and that that gets facilitated as fast as possible. So I, I really think, you know, one of our things is we're going to try to reduce lengths of stay at the Douglas County Youth Center, and I think this is going to be a great way to be able to do that.
No, add a component, Kenny McMorris, I'm the CEO of Charles Drew Health Center. Many of you have mentioned on a number of occasions the importance of making sure that we have kind of a trauma-informed environment. And what we know about the population is that consistency is going to be important. And so the providers that we'll have within DCYC will also be working within hand-in-glove with Charles Drew Health Center in a community-based setting. One of the good things about Charles Drew is that we're able to take care of the entire families, not only the individual, but we'll be able to provide care at the family level. Additionally, we're talking about just at least the behavioral health and psychiatric component of it. We do primary medical as well as oral healthcare as well. And so again, as, as we look at this, what makes this different is the, is we're very intentional about how we're staying together and how we're connected. I think that services have been provided, and again, great leadership within, within, but that coordination is what's going to be important. And so our hope and our goal is to make sure that we reduce the likelihood of recidivism through coordinated care and ongoing care, staying connected. The navigation component of this is going to be significant as we move forward. But our thought is, is that a lot of these young people can be managed in a community-based setting. We're going to give them that opportunity to get the care that they deserve in, in partnership with you all. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Um, and you...
Motion to approve.
Well, wait a minute. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you still want to go on?
Thank you, gentlemen. This is a, an exciting initiative. Zeroing in on one component of what we're passing here today, which is the treatment component of this resolution. You know, I, I'm interested in that because it's kind of where the rubber meets the road with these kids. So, you know, having done thirty years as a disability lawyer, I'm familiar with history, diagnosis, prognosis is going to be three steps. And the assessment is, you know, we're assessing your history, how you got here. Diagnosis, as Doctor pointed out, dual diagnosis is that important middle step. And then the most important thing is what are we going to do for them then? You know, the treatment component. They're not really under our roof long enough for us to give a lot of treatment onsite at the Douglas County Youth Center. But you bring up a, a great point relative to upon discharge, we would have something for them, a treatment program going forward. The prognosis would be do this and actually give them some care. Talk to me relative to that, because that's really exciting.
So I, I think, Commissioner, thanks for the question, and I think it's a very good one. You know, one of the key roles in, in treating youth that have mental illness as well as substance use disorders is, is the ability to initiate some medication treatment for them. And, and getting in just a short period of time of medication for addiction treatment, for instance, or medications for depression or anxiety disorders is a way to help a youth start to feel better. And to buy in then to that, to that care. And then our ability then to transition a youth, call their physician who might take over care, or their psychiatrist who might take over care, or transition to Charles Drew where we have the ability to continue care in that setting, I think is going to be vital. I agree with you. I think that the only way this is going to work is if we've got a way to be able to transition and provide a continuum of care straight from DCYC to the community. The youth and their families have a choice of where they would like to go for their care, obviously. But giving us the ability to tell a provider in, in the community that this medication was started, and here's the response that we got, and here's the amount of medicine we're sending home, and this is what we're going to prescribe or, or request for psychotherapeutic intervention, whether it be in outpatient care or seeing a therapist a couple times a week. And, and then having the navigator role, being able to help the family facilitate that care once they leave DCYC, I think is going to be vitally important. I think there can be a disconnect, unfortunately, from starting care in, in the facility and then, and continuing to receive that care once they leave the facility. And our hope is with our, our pilot project that we're going to close that loop for a lot of these kids. And, and so it's a great question.
That's great. And, and, you know, you zero right in on, on what I'm talking about. So we have the capacity now and do provide medication for the kids under our care. The thing that we don't have the capacity for, we don't provide is therapy.
Right.
And, you know, that's a huge component of, you know, their ability to succeed going forward, and the, the counter of that is to avoid recidivism. So the problem is if kids come from, you know, a stable background in a middle-class family or whatever, they're covered by the family's health insurance. And so they get sick, whether it's, you know, a physical ailment or a mental ailment, they've got insurance, and then they go to a doctor, and then these families are set up. These kids, the kids that we're talking about, don't have that. They are not covered by anybody. And so, you know, maybe they would be, I don't know, Medicaid-eligible, but when it comes down to just that point, we discharge them and we say, okay, go to Charles Drew, you've got a prescription medication, but we want to do some therapy with you. How does that, the mechanics of that, the financial mechanics of that, in your mind, if you know, occur so that they can actually get that therapy?
Well, you know, just to...
So Kenny, well, Doc, let me just, based on these new rules, we're going on, you all finish your complete answer to Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then we'll move on. No, finish your complete answer. Go with it.
Okay. So I, I agree with you that a lot of them will qualify for Medicaid, and, and part of the navigator role would be to help the family make sure that that gets assessed and applied for and put into place. I think we also have the ability to use probation vouchers to pay for care as well. And not every youth is involved with that, but I think the, the ability for probation vouchers to pay for Medicaid, or, well, for, for therapy and doctor's visits, I think is going to be an important piece of that as well. And then I'll let Mr. McMorris talk about the Charles Drew kind of piece on that, okay?
Thank you.
And so, and thanks for the, for the question, Commissioner. That's really what makes this relationship pretty, pretty unique. And that as a federally qualified health center, we are responsible for taking care of the underinsured and uninsured population in our community, regardless of where they are. And so one of the unique things that we have is what we call a sliding fee scale. So families can come in, we'll determine whether or not they're eligible for Medicaid, and in the event that they're not, then they're able to receive services based on that sliding fee scale. In some cases, that may be zero. And so we're still going to provide the care, and, and again, the continuity and component of that, so that they're going to get the same level of expertise, the same level of care, because we've continued that continuity within Charles Drew. And again, the, the thought would be that they're going to choose a provider of choice. And so given the, the role in which we play in terms of how our system works, we believe that this is going to give them the greatest opportunity for success in working with Charles Drew and our partners there.
Great, thanks.
Any more questions? We do have a motion, the second. Please vote.
Before Mr. McMorris leaves, I need to tell you that at Ann's funeral, your organization was involved because Kim White, who's a soloist, did a terrific job. As it turned out, some of the music didn't work so well, so she did it a cappello. It was gorgeous.
I will pass on. Thank you so much.
Passing on, thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Commissioner Boyle, that's his administrative aide, so he, just so you know the connection.
Good. That's good. All right, thanks.
We go over to item G, which is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report by civil service, and that is submitted. Item two is legislative issues. Item B is discussion action on legislative bill five eighty. This was brought up two weeks ago. Kent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. I put together just a, a real quick couple of, of things here to provide a little bit Because this bill has implications for household hazardous waste funding, and household hazardous waste is going to be abbreviated as HHW here in this presentation. Want to, just to put a little bit of context on this, under the sink, the facility here in, in Omaha is funded and operated by the city of Omaha via an inter-local agreement that we entered into in 2016. That was an updated inter-local agreement between the three parties. Under the sink has, has continued to see additional materials dropped off, and that, that amount has, has increased in the coming years, or in, in recent years, for sure. The latest figures from 2018, it's about, it's, it's just about the same as in 2017, so it's leveled off a little bit. The county under that new inter-local agreement provides payments to the city of Omaha to assist with the operational costs, and those operational costs over the past three years, or excuse me, the, the amount that, that Douglas County has paid into, to that operational cost is around ninety-some thousand in, in 2016, about a hundred and eight thousand in 2017, and about a hundred and two thousand this past year. We ask, or the city of Omaha, as, as the facility operator, makes a grant request to NDEQ for one of their grant funds. And so what they, what they did in 2016 was to ask for a five-year grant with those, those particular numbers for each, each operating year. And so right now, we're, we're in the middle of that, that third year, the three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-dollar amount. And that, that is, is coming from NDEQ to assist with the operations. So switching now to the, to the subject of LB five eighty, where we're looking at a landfill fee adjustment to, to assist with this, one of the, one of the premises for this is, is that we're trying to, to find operational support that, that doesn't involve grants. As you, you may have seen, the legislature, a number of years ago, put some provisions in that, that they have the ability to go in and start rating funds to balance their general fund budget. These types of programs are, are very susceptible to that. So there, there is a, very much a concern that some of these grant funds are going to go away. And so there's, there's a sharp shortfall. The household hazardous waste facilities here and around the state serve a very valid function. They keep a lot of, of stuff that would otherwise go in landfills and contribute to potential environmental issues. They keep that out of there. It, a lot of these materials are reused and, and have, have a good purpose. So, so there is a need for it. It also helps to kind of check one of our boxes on, on our stormwater permits, being able to keep some of that stuff from, from getting into surface waters. The solid waste program study that was, was through the legislature and finalized in 2017, there are a number of comments in there that talk about grant funding and being able to provide more sustainable funding for a variety of things. But also to, to look at that landfill fee and potentially increase it as, as a source of additional funds. So currently, the, the landfill fee is a dollar twenty-five, and that applies to all municipal solid waste landfills across the state. There are twenty-three of those, plus there are some, a handful of transfer stations. And transfer stations also have to pay that fee if they are transporting the waste that's transferred out of state. So that's where it is right now. It's a dollar twenty-five, it's been there since the early nineteen nineties. The proposed fee under LB five eighty is two dollars per ton, and that equates to a seventy-five cent differential that then is proposed to be rebated back to entities to fund their HHW, household hazardous waste, operations. And the reason it's, it's designed as a rebate is that it takes it out of that grant piece. And the rebate, at least on the surface, appears to be more secure. There's a direct, direct nexus between what's, what's generated out of facility, the fee goes to the state and then comes, comes immediately back. I mentioned other facilities around the state, that, that's kind of where they are. They, these are the, the, the permanent facilities or the, the established facilities that handle household hazardous waste. Omaha, Lincoln, Norfolk, Grand Island, Carney, North Platte, and then in Red Willow County and, and McCook. So a couple of weeks ago, I, I asked you to kind of hold off on this while I, I kind of assessed some of the concerns and issues for this bill. So one of, one of them was to identify what, what's the basis for the rebate. And some of that discussion is, has kind of centered on, well, we have a facility, we know what our budget is, we know what we've asked for grant funds in the past, we're looking to replace the grant funds with a, with the rebate. So that, that's part of it. Those places around the state that don't have facilities but, but, but generally have collection events, they would be basing theirs off of the same, same kind of deal. Here's what you spent in the past, here's, that's the basis. So there are some details that, that would need to get worked out with the, the process in terms of, of what specifically constitutes that basis. in terms of what specifically constitutes that basis and rebate application. The communities without a facility, that's a little bit different, but still can be, can be addressed. Legislature rating funds is what I already mentioned, and the question came up about construction demolition landfills and what's that. So, with that, I'm going to, I'll pause and-
Yep, you got it. Let me, so, with that, are there any, anybody wants to, I just need to go through this. Anybody wants to be a proponent of this? Any opponents? Commissioner Boyle?
First of all, you've done a terrific job, and I appreciate the way you present these matters in very readable form for starters and logical. I have a question, I'm sitting here and I, I wondered about this for a long time because about, I'm going to use a couple of words that are going to take some people's breath away, but it's called a bottle bill. I'm looking here, I've got two bottles of water that if this was, if I can get to California in time, I can get a dime back for it, or Oregon. So, I'm going to be leaving this meeting to go to California and take these two bottles back. But seriously, I think it's time we come to grips with a recycling, some kind of legislation, and if it doesn't go with the rest of the state, we ought at least have the option here in Douglas County. And I think that could include plastic bags. I mean, I am a great offender, I forget to bring them in, but a person at a grocery store told me that a plastic bag is like four cents for the grocer to give me, what now only that cost. But I think it's time we start thinking about recycling and the litter and all the rest of it, and how we can copy some other states and localities, not necessarily the ones that are banning everything under the sun, but I'd like to ask you to investigate that for us and come back and give us a report on who's doing what, particularly our neighbors. And I know there was opposition from one of the big beer distributors at one time, but I think we need to talk about it. This is something we need to deal with. So, I, I think what could hap, I understand what you're doing now and I appreciate it. I was not really much in favor of an increase, but I think I would be in favor of this, what you're proposing, it's needed. I've used that quite a few times, it's a great spot, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craft.
And concerning the issues Commissioner Boyle brought up, would you like, I, I'd like to have here a presentation on the orange bag. Were you at that?
No.
Okay. The orange bag is where we can recycle those plastic sacks and the things we don't put into the green bin. I fill up in the orange bag, a bag a week, pretty much, and that gets made into construction materials and various other items, perhaps park benches. I know that there's in, oh, I'm trying to remember where it is, but their company that's doing the recycling is giving them a park bench for every so many pounds of the plastic sacks they're recycling. Now, would you like to explain briefly the orange bag program and assemble or cause to happen here a presentation?
Sure. The orange bag, hefty, hefty energy bag is kind of the, the label for that. It's designed to, to take plastics, materials that, that are not typically recyclable. There are things like potato chip bags, toothpaste tubes, those types of things, plastic film, those types of things as well. The, the plastic bags that Commissioner Boyle mentioned, those would, those would be eligible as well. The, the nice thing about the energy bag program is that you take those things, you put them in the energy bag, and it keeps it from contaminating a lot of the, the materials recycling facility, first star fiber here locally. Plastic bags and, and all of that other stuff that's not recyclable is all waste to them, but unfortunately, it also really screws up their sorting equipment, creates a lot of downtime and inefficiencies there. So, that, that helps with that program to take those materials out of that, out of that waste stream, and then they are converted into, into useful things. I know that there's an effort being made to try to get a paralysis plant here in the metro area, and that, those energy bags would go directly into that, that paralysis program then creates a diesel fuel.
And explain to the public and myself, what is paralysis?
Paralysis is just, is just a process to take those energy bags and, and they, I don't understand the process itself, but it converts it into diesel.
Right. It's superheating it without oxygen, and according to the young lady who gave us a presentation, it's very forgiving. For example, in the potato chip bag or candy bag, if there's a little bit of chocolate, it vaporizes it in the process.
Correct.
So, that, those candy wrappers, that little piece of plastic, that big piece of plastic can be made into something useful instead of, there's, there's a drywall material they showed us, that was very nice, and it was amazingly heavy for the small piece we had.
Right.
So, yes.
So, I can work on getting a presentation in front of you, yes?
What are your, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation for you today is, is to take no action, simply because there, there are a number of issues out there that, talking to the City of Lincoln yesterday, they have kind of a different landfill situation. They operate on the enterprise fund. An additional fee right there would create issues for them. I, I think there's, as part of this whole conversation about LB five eighty, there's going to be some, some good things come out of it in terms of, of kind of energizing people to, to look at the fee realistically. If DQ and the state thinks that they're going to eliminate grant funds down the road, then I think there are implications long-term for, for landfills, and potentially, if that dollar twenty-five fee, for example, went away, then we could, we could simply replace it with that same dollar twenty-five and bring all that revenue directly to Douglas County and to offset the, the costs of Under the Sink, which would be a, a great thing to do if we can do that. We just, we just don't want it to add an additional fee here that makes us non-competitive, because that, that becomes a real issue. As if you look at this little map right here, there are several competing landfills which are drawing waste away from the county and drawing resources away from the county. So, the area here, Sarpy County landfill, that landfill's closed, but, but they operate a transfer station, waste connections to that, and, and a lot of that, of that waste that's delivered to the transfer station makes its way to Butler County or over here to the Lust Hills sanitary landfill over here, River City Recycling. Also, there's, there's diversions to, to these other landfills. So, in the greater context, I, I think it's in the best interest of the county not to take a position on this right now and to let, let the public hearing play out with the legislature. I think there's going to be some other comments to that, and the, the construction demolition landfill, whether the fee should apply to them, I think that's going to be an issue as well. So, I, I don't see the need for the county to take a position right now on this, one way or another.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, Kent, you brought up something I'm concerned about. I'm going to be, I do have a client who has an interest in the landfill, so I'll be filing a notice with Accountability and Disclosure Commission, because I, really, I don't know that I've ever spoken about the landfill at a meeting like this. I'm very concerned that the city is, with these, this new contract they've got going, I don't think they designated us as the landfill where the, the waste goes, have they?
Yes, yes, they have, and, and that was a point that, there was some language in there that, that still gives the Public Works Director the authority to have the waste go someplace else, but I got some clarification on that, and, and the full intent is to comply with our interlocal agreement that city-county contracts that involve solid waste go to Pheasant Point. That's still in place. I, what, what they were concerned about was that should there be something that happens to Pheasant Point where it's not available anymore, then they'd have the option to go someplace else. So, I think we've got some clarification, it's all, I, I feel a lot better about that right now.
Okay, great, and if, if you could reduce something to writing, that'd be helpful too, just so that we have, I mean, I don't know if that's-
Sure, I, I can excerpt, I, I can excerpt that from, from my communications back to Public Works that provides some assurances for that.
That'd be great, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so you will tell us when, Kent?
Pardon me?
You'll tell us when, at the right point?
Yes, if, if I feel we need to move forward with the position, I will bring this back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Kent, thank you.
With that, we'll go on to item C, this discussion action in support of LB seven ten. This was on two weeks ago and asked to be put on. I'll let Marcos introduce the conversation he's had with, with Sean Kelly. Marcos?
Hi, Commissioners. Marcos S. Martin, Douglas County Labor and Legislation. Some background on LB seven ten, just to kind of refresh your memory. LB seven ten was filed by Senator Kavanaugh. The bill itself would raise the tax on tobacco products. An example of that is a pack of cigarettes would be raised from sixty-four cents a pack of tax to two dollars and fourteen cents a pack in tax. That, those funds, according to the bill, would be redistributed to a variety of purposes. Those, those purposes would be medical, health-related, smoking cessation, et cetera. Anyway, there are four, four of those uses that we are in particular interested in, that is, the, the use of those, that additional tax revenue. Twenty-five percent of the tax revenue would be for Medicaid expansion, one percent would go to emergency protective custody services and resources, two percent for health services and county corrections, and four percent for beds in county hospitals and county-owned health centers for mental health treatment, et cetera. So, those are four purposes for the increase in the tax that we would be, or the, the spread in the, in the tax that we would be interested in. As an update, we're working with Sean, Sherry Glassnap, some other groups, just to better understand maybe how those funds would be used or how those funds would be distributed, whether it's the EPC, the Emergency Protective Custody Funds, how, how would they be appropriated and distributed? The Corrections Health Services, the County Health Services Group, how those funds would be used, what's the interplay, if any, with Region Six and the other regions? So, we are working on that, and that's kind of the, the background, I guess I'm, or update I'm giving you on, on LB seven ten.
Commissioner Morgan and Craft?
Okay, Marcos, thank you. I'm fortunate enough that I had a mom and dad that prevented me from ever smoking and, but I'm curious, with the three-hundred percent increase in the tax, do you think we're going to see more cigarettes being bought in other states and actually could be costing us revenue, you know, of what might happen? It's just something to think about when you're increasing it that much, and I don't, you know, adhere to the smoking deal, but at the same time, I'm concerned that they'll be bringing them into the state from Colorado or Denver or Iowa or whatever.
I can say on that, that I think ours is low compared to, to others, and I don't know what the neighboring states is, but for years, this has been the argument, to bring it up to where other states are.
Oh, okay, that's good to know. I didn't know they were that high. Sometime, Marcos, you may let us know that.
I will, I will check that for Iowa and Kansas, yeah, in Colorado, yeah.
Kansas, thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
And this is one I think we should watch and watch closely, I think it can be very good. I notice this introduced by Senator Kavanaugh. I assume that's a relative of our Commissioner Kavanaugh, and I'm going to reiterate what I said last week, or two weeks ago, I forgot, but I do believe Mr. Kavanaugh should abstain from voting on anything legislative, whether he is for it or against it, whether he lobbies for it or against it. And I'm going to point out that he was talking about, we were gouging the eye out when we were opposing something, of the chair of one of the committees. And that led me to believe that he needs to either gain favor with all of the legislators who have positions with bills, and since he's a lobbyist, he doesn't want to be seen in disfavor. So, I do believe there's a possible conflict, at least if not a monetary conflict, an ethical conflict. And as we've seen with Commissioner Morgan, he abstains even when he didn't have a monetary interest, and the Accountability and Disclosure told him he could participate. He chose not to because of the appearance of impropriety. And I do believe that the abstention is a proper thing to do for Mr. Kavanaugh.
Before I go over, let me just reiterate for this so this doesn't go places. I brought this back up because it was requested last time, so I'm just trying to see where the will of the board is. Let me note, there's not a date on it, so with that, Commissioner Kavanaugh, then Boyle.
First of all, I want to commend Senator Kavanaugh for bringing this piece of legislation, which is a great piece of legislation. I've looked for ways to fund our total lack of long-term mental health care in Douglas County for some time now, and this provides for that, that's a good thing. I, I, I can't begin to think where I would start with these continual ad hominem attacks from Mr. Craft, but I'd only point out that, that there's no gain in any of this for me, unlike our colleague, Mr. Morgan, whose company gains hundreds of thousands of dollars from these leases that we're talking about. He properly abstains on that because he has a demonstrable financial gain. That's the difference. This is lost on Mr. Craft, who's more interested in just personal attacks, week after week after week, which is fine, you've got to have the thin, thick skin to be in this game, but it's totally off the point. It's like saying, we lawyers on this board shouldn't vote on anything that has to do with litigation, which we do all the time, because we're lawyers and we might go to court and we might be in that judge's court. It's about that thin. The point is, we've got great legislation here. The board, I think, is rightfully concerned about these bills because they do what we should be concerned about in terms of legislation. They enhance the financial situation of Douglas County. That's it. That's what this does, that's what the previous bill does, that's why we should be interested in supporting them.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I, I have difficulty with some of the issues that my good friend, Mr. Craft, raises. I understand what you're saying, but the best thing, I suppose, is to, for Mr. Kavanaugh, I don't believe there's a conflict, but you can always ask Accountability and Disclosure, which is what I intend to do on a previous comment I made. I think what we need to do is really take a hard look at some of the other options that are out there that we need to get our two cents in on, and one is the sales tax from Amazon-type sales, and that's just going to be a, a windfall for the state one more time. And you know what's ironic about the city's restaurant tax, is that if you look at your bill, it's almost ten percent when you're at a restaurant, and seven percent, seven percent goes to the state of Nebraska. And they do send some back to the City of Omaha, but nobody raises the issue that the state is, is taking as much money as they are. And so, it is a one-way street, and that's why I approached the governor and mentioned that, and I've got Commissioner Morgan and maybe someone else can come with us, but we need to present a real strong plan about what we think should happen. I think one is, let us share in some part of the Amazon-type sales tax. Another one is, you know, I'm sitting, sitting here and thinking, you know, I don't pay, I just, when I have my suit clean, I don't pay any sales tax. When I go to the, my daughter-in-law to get my hair cut nice and short like this, I don't pay any sales tax for that. I, we don't, there's a lot of things we don't pay sales tax on. An accountant, for example, and I'll tell this, right, looking right at Jim Kavanaugh, lawyers don't charge a sales tax. I mean, there's all these services, there is no sales tax on, and really, it's quite discriminating, because if, if you think about the taxes that are avoided, I mean, do we know a lot of people who are making the minimum wage who use cleaners or use accountants or use lawyers? The answer's no. So, I mean, it really, it really protects another class of people, to be honest with you, not that it's, we're all high-class, but the point is, and there's a, a lot of taxes that could be collected. And Senator Pauls, who's now in the City Council of Omaha, had a complete list that would have just been terrific if we could have just got part of it put into place. So, I think we ought to focus on those things, and I, I don't like to see this tax going up on cigarettes. I used to be a heavy, heavy smoker. Unfortunately, I have a couple of family members that maybe this will be the thing to push me over the edge, but I doubt it. So, I think it's certainly worth considering, particularly what it would be used for, so there you have it.
Commissioner Do-
Thank you.
Thank you. I kind of share a little bit of Commissioner Craft's skepticism or cynicism. The last time there was a lobbyist on the county board was Dan Lynch, and he had to quit lobbying for Blue Cross Blue Shield while he was here, and then he ran for the legislature successfully. I, when you talk about transparency, I have no idea who pays Commissioner Kavanaugh to lobby for them, but to say that there's no vested interest, no money, is bogus. I mean, this is how he makes his living. Someday, I think it would be good if he shared with all of us, who is paying him to represent them in the legislature? I don't know. I don't know who that is, and so I'm not sure, you know, when he won't side with us because he doesn't want to offend the chair of a committee, I don't know who he's really representing when he takes these stands. And now that we're being asked to support something by Senator Kavanaugh that's going to let the state be a partner with us with long-term mental health, which the state is such a lousy partner, I mean, I have no desire to do anything in partnership with them again. I mean, their entire history is, change the rules, pull the rug out from under you, stiff you. I mean, now they have the authority to raid our funds if we get much money in a fund. Man, it would be nice to write the rules. So, the whole thing, just, I don't have a very good comfort level. I don't feel that we are, that we have the kind of transparency that we have been told we should be striving for. That makes me uncomfortable. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Duda's ignorance of the legislative process continues to astound me. Registered lobbyist in Nebraska, as a matter of public record, registered with the Clerk of the Legislature each and every year. You can get this stuff online. The fact that you don't know about this is no reflection on anybody but yourself. The point is, I'm not done. I just pointed out to you that you can go to the Clerk of the Legislature's public website and find the registration of all lobbyists in Nebraska, if you had taken the time and trouble to do that, before throwing personal accusations around so recklessly. This particular bill, I'm familiar with, because years ago, I worked on behalf of a similar measure for Creighton University. Our chairman works for Creighton University. Creighton University profits by the cigarette tax in Nebraska. I haven't pointed out that there's any possible impropriety for him putting this back on the agenda, because there's not. And presumably, if it ever came up that Creighton University was going to enhance its position relative to cigarette tax, he would do the right thing and let us know that, and that's on him. There's nothing in this that in any way impacts me, my clients, which are publicly available on the Clerk of the Legislature's website, if anybody had bothered to look at it. And that's true of each and every issue that we've discussed. These are not substantive to the issues. These are personal attacks for other reasons that Mr. Duda and Mr. Craft feel necessary to make continually. They're not based on fact, but it's a reflection on them, I think, that they devolve and sink to this level pretty much each and every week. I'm sorry to see that.
Commissioners Boyle, Morgan, Craft.
Well, I think it's up to Commissioner Kavanaugh to make the move to do, if he feels he has a conflict, then he is fully capable of doing that, to file appropriately and to disclose it, just as Commissioner Morgan has, and just as I did just a little while ago. And I understand what's, I understand the concern and so forth, but I think it's up to each individual commissioner to state that. And if they don't, if we do have a conflict and we don't state it, and we financially gain from something, we will pay dearly for that. Each one of us will. So, I think we all have the ability to do that ourselves. And I know, you know, Jim is a good friend of mine, and we've had candid conversations, and he is, I know he's a lightning rod. He brings up some damn good issues, and sometimes I agree, and sometimes I don't. And when I do agree, I do kind of pay a price here and there, but I do that with each of you when you bring up things that I agree with. So, I, and I do, oddly enough, I appreciate the civility with which this conversation has taken. It's been civil, and even though it's been quite accusatory, but I think Jim's, Commissioner Kavanaugh is fully capable of disclosing any conflict he has, and as he said earlier, all of his clients are listed on a public system with the state of Nebraska. I think that's good enough for me.
Commissioner Morgan.
One of the most important things we as elected officials can do is be certain that we always have respect for all people that come before the board. The other thing I don't care for is when you talk about Commissioners Duda's ignorance in using that word. It bothers me, because I'd like to see us all have respect for one another when we disagree. I'd also like to see us make more accurate statements. Commissioner Kavanaugh, when you say Morgan's made hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last seven minutes, maybe sometime you could show me that? Because we manage a property for some other owner, or we happen to be a partner, or one of my peoples involved in making a request for a proposal, and they take way more than half of that commission for doing something like that, it isn't hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I think you ought to be a little more respectful and accurate when you're making those kinds of remarks. And if you decide to show me how we've made that, I'll be glad to listen to that, and then you can bring it to the full board and show them how that's happened.
Commissioner Craft.
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification. I am in favor, in general, of this bill. So, it's the, sometimes the appearance of a conflict that can be, because we don't know who needs to be schmoozed and patted gently on the back in order to get what we're getting after. And that was my point. Thank you.
With that, my sense is the board wants to watch this. There's no hearing date, and we'll keep abreast of that. Commissioner Boyle.
There's a couple of pieces of legislation I'd like to bring up. One is Senator Chambers has introduced L B six forty-six, which deals with abolishment of bail. I'm very interested in that. I'd like us to, if we have the time, unless there's a hearing coming up pretty quickly on this, I'd like us to
Six forty-six.
Look at this, six forty-six, and look at it to see what our position might be on that, and if it is, I think we should consider supporting it. Also, on behalf of my good friend from France, Commissioner Borgeson, who's not here, also known as Commissioner LaFong, the young people at Millard have, went down and testified on a bill to name corn our official, I guess, crop. And I think it's really pretty cool those children did that. I would like to, it's L B one oh five, I believe, I'd like to ask the county board to endorse and support the passage of L B one oh five on behalf of my good friend, who's from the Millard area, and also my good friend, the farmer over there, and support that. I think that's terrific. I just love to see the kids doing this. So, I'd make that as a motion, if I may, if I need to.
You can't? I'm just hesitant. I don't know what's in that bill.
Well, I think we have a we're allowed to do that, I guess.
You can't. I just
I make that motion.
I mean, I can put the bill on, I can do it now, I can bring it back. It's, L B one oh five denotes the, denotes corn as the state vegetable.
Yeah, I think, let's try to do it, it's not too
Well, let me listen, because I want to make sure that the board's comfortable with that. Yeah, if the board's comfortable with it, because I don't know what's in the bill, it sounds safe. If the board's comfortable, we can do it. Okay. Motion to approve L B one oh five, seconded by Commissioner Duda, and I'll look for the clerk whenever they're ready. Please vote.
I vote yes. And Mr. Chair, I would ask that you communicate to the principal of the school, and also so the students see that we've done this, and with appropriate wording, that we admire their political activity.
Sure. Yeah, and Commissioners, really, everything that is in L B one oh five is literally, corn is hereby declared the state vegetable of Nebraska. So
And if we could write to the children, let them know that we support their political activity, that'd be terrific. Thank you.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, but all the Commissioners present voting yes.
So, Marcos, I would say, let me, if you're fine, instead of a letter, you can do some research on corn. Claire might be able to help her. And we'll pass a resolution and frame it and send it to the school.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Craft.
I've not read six forty-six, but I didn't send everybody an email. My good friend, David Herzog, had just gotten off the phone with Ernie Chambers, and Ernie Chambers was introducing it that day, but we did not have a copy of the bill. So, Marcos, if you could print it out, I realize it's multiple pages, so that I could read it, I'd appreciate it, but in general, I will probably support it, and I think we should have it on our agenda.
We're putting it on for twenty-six, I guess?
Yes.
Yes.
If that's soon enough. If it's not, we need to do something if we
We can, in an immediate area, if we bring it up, we can
Notify Mr. Kelly.
Commissioner Duda.
If I may, I'm sorry that I don't remember the number. There is one other bill that I would like us to look at in two weeks. I ran into Sean Malott's at Ann's visitation, and she was talking that there is a bill to expand the bonding authority for the N R D. I don't know enough about it yet to say much, other than I'd like to look into it, and maybe in two weeks, we can have it on our agenda for consideration. And I'm not even a hundred percent sure.
I can pull that bill. Yeah, I do know which one you're talking about, the N R D bonding authority.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. And your bill, Commissioner Boyle, is L B six forty-six. There is a hearing tomorrow on six forty-six.
Okay. I haven't read the bill. Principle, I mean, it depends, in principle, it's, I could say, it is best practice in some of the, it's one of the more progressive moves gaining momentum across the country. I haven't read the bill specifically, but being on the national board for that, I know some states from really liberal states to conservative states have backed this. Kentucky is one of the conservative states there. I think Texas is one of the conservative states there, and New York, California are the more liberal ones. So, you know, I'd leave it on the will of the board where they want to go.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
If I may, I mean, I think, first of all, his philosophy on this, I think, is in lock step with the majority of what this board feels, and what is really taking place, as you said, in Texas and other states. I would have no reservation. I do have a copy of the bill. I would have no reservation at all in sending a communication to Senator Chambers that we support this, and directing our lobbyists to testify in favor. It is really constructive. Bail is one of the things that sends people into a tailspin, you know, when they fail to appear in all the rest of it. It just starts a real spiral down that is very destructive to that person, plus the person he lives with, whoever that may be, and there's children involved. It is, it should be abolished. So, I'd like to see us communicate to Senator Chambers that we support six forty-six, and I have a copy of it here, and anybody who wants to get a glimpse at it, it's really running a risk, but I trust him, and I trust what he's doing.
I guess the question is, do you want to formally
I make that motion.
Is there a second for that?
I'm hesitant until I read it.
Are you comfortable enough supporting and ratifying it here?
Well, I am, and I look, I have an appointment tomorrow that runs over the noon hour, but if I can, I'll get down and person.
Is everybody fine in voicing some support, but not formally until we get a grip on it?
Yes.
And then we'll do that next, okay?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fine.
And you can tell them in general I support
Commissioner Morgan.
I just want to praise Marcos' efficiency. He told me that the tax in Kansas is a dollar, approximately a dollar seventy. The governor tried to get it to two twenty. Iowa wasn't available, but that tells you how efficient Marcos is. So, thank you, Marcos.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Marcos.
I'll look for the rest.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about six forty-six?
Yes.
Eliminate cash bail bonds, appearance bonds, and related provisions?
Right.
And you recommend that we support that bill?
I do.
Except for a hearing on February thirteenth?
Thirteenth? Tomorrow.
Well, no, that's what
By thirty?
Yes.
I guess the group of, while you were coming in, agreed to express support for it, but formally, as people get more familiar with it, ratify it next week, because everybody hasn't had a chance to get up to speed, so.
So, what would be the actual position that we're talking about?
I think the board has got consensus on ratifying, general support for the concept, and then we'll ratify it in five weeks. I mean, March, I mean, next on twenty-sixth, we get back and get a chance to get
Okay, so we are not taking a position on the bill being heard tomorrow?
Not officially yet, no, because nobody's had a chance to read it.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes, New York Times ran a great article, perhaps, two weeks ago.
You sent it out.
Oh, I did send it out? Okay. A very lengthy article, but they believe that they'll be able to close Ellis Island, if I remember the correct prison.
They will.
Because of the decrease in the daily population that this has happened, and the results have been very good, and it's been going on for quite a while there. Do you know how long?
No, they, New York just started this effort within the last two years.
Okay. It's been going on for two years, but the decrease has been tremendous, and the tax savings has been tremendous, and the livelihood of the people released without bail, and their family lives has been tremendous.
Yeah. Could be a good thing.
Okay. With that, we do have a need for executive session. What I'd like to do is motion, and then I'm going to give Commissioner Boyle a personal privilege here. There's a, is there a motion going to executive session for
So move.
Okay. For the record, it's for real estate litigation and labor. With that, Commissioner Boyle.
Do we vote first or not?
There's a, no, because I want to give you time. That motion was from Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Craft.
Well, what I want to do is just briefly say thank you very much for the resolution that you passed to honor my wife. She's being honored in Washington this week as well. She told me over the years that I kind of corrupted her, my humor. She, when we were meeting Michelle Obama, I'm standing there, and Ann's in front of me, and I'm next to her, and this was at the girl's aunt, and Michelle comes through, and I'm just, I love this woman, okay, everything about her. So, what does Ann do? As Michelle goes, "Right, Mrs. Obama," it's right up next to me, she said, "My husband has a crush on you." And Mr. Obama, "Oh, my God," she kissed and hugged me and all this sort of stuff. I said, "What made you say that? That was so," you know, "It's because you do," and I said, "Well, that's true." Anyway, she's, Father Jim Clifton, a Jesuit, presided at the event, and also Tom Emmett, who's a reverend with the Metropolitan Community Church, held a service yesterday that recognized her belief in equality and the things she's done. Thank you.
And if I may chime in, the funeral service was the best funeral service and the most enlightening funeral service I had ever been at.
To that point, to help you get through this, I, you know, I can't, when I, I think if anybody went there, the wake started nine, I got there at eight fifty, and it was obvious people were there at eight thirty. So, with that, you know, I haven't lost a wife, but I lost two parents, and the one thing I can say is that I evidently saw her seeds planted throughout the room, so even though her mortal body is not here, her spirit will live on for years to come. With that, is there a motion, we got a motion, a second, please vote.
And I do have to tell you, I cry at L.
So, excuse me. Hey.
I do. I'm the biggest ball baby around.
You and John Boehner.
Motion passes, six to zero.
And again, we're going in for real estate litigation and labor. And again, we're going in for real estate litigation and labor.
Are you, yes, Commissioner Kepner?
Yes.
Yes, okay, super. Don't want to interrupt. I need somebody.
I just never saw that before.
Oh, yeah, just to keep up with...
So why doesn't Boyle's ever light on?
That one never shows up because it's broken, yeah.
Forever? I mean, my gosh.
I know, it's very sad. Commissioners Boyle and Morgan, you're both yes to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes, perfect, all right. Motion passes all commissioners present voting yes.